Uh, Ginny, you want to lead us in the national? National anthem?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman? Before you start, could I beg the board's indulgence for 30 seconds?
Sure.
This, um, I hope the camera can get this guy. This is Flat Stanley. He is with a, um, he is with the niece of one of our employees here, Lisa Sinca, our revenue officer. Lisa's niece hails from the Joan Fuller School in North Conway, New Hampshire. And this gentleman, Flat Stanley, is visiting with us tonight to see if local government in New Hampshire is the same as local government in Massachusetts. So Flat Stanley will be visiting during the duration of the meeting, and this is especially looking forward to the liquor hearing and unusual events like that. He also wanted to extend to you warm greetings, that if you are ever in the North Conway area, please drop in on the selectmen's meeting, and Flat Stanley will be happy to be your host. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the boards, appreciate that.
Welcome, Stanley.
All right, live free to die, Flat Stanley. Actually, I also wanted to start off with something at a moment of silence. I'd like to start the meeting with a moment of silence in memory of Barbara Germaine. Barbara was a very respected longtime resident of Foxborough. She was our elected collector and treasurer, and then our appointed revenue officer for our town. Her elected and appointed service spanned 23 years, and she certainly left a mark on many people in town. The number of years and her dedication aside, Barbara was a key position in our town, as our town transitioned our systems into the computer era. Contrary to current systems of instant data and email communication, Barbara is fondly remembered as a person that took the time to work with people, listen to their specific situations, and when encountering a delicate situation regarding people that struggled in town, she took it upon herself to find a way to make it work without embarrassment and with compassion, and people appreciated the skill of that dedication. You may have heard that we lowered the flag at Half Master in her service on Saturday, and something that is not done very often, unless there is a military significance. When we asked our Veterans Officer, Michael Johns, if this could be done, his unhesitating response was that Barbara was in the heart of many of the veterans in town, had personal relations with them during her service, and he did not hesitate for a minute. So if we could bow our heads in recognition of Barbara Germaine, as our thoughts go out to her and her family for a minute. Thank you very much. Just a couple of quick updates of some of the things that are coming. Invensus, Mark's been talking to representatives of Invensus. Many of you know it as the Foxborough Company, a longtime business partner for over 100 years. And if you remember, last summer, we had recognized them for their community service. They want to come in to talk to us about business opportunities in town, and where they're at and where their future is, and I think it's good news. So, Mark's been spending some time, and I think we're going to put them on our February 5th agenda.
Yeah.
Which is our next hearing. Another quick update, Tri-Town Chamber of Commerce, there's a meeting Thursday morning at 8:00, and this is kind of the business representation of Foxborough, Mansfield, and Norton. And they want to assist us in kind of the sewer expansion on the Tri-Town partnership that we're trying to do. So if you're available, and if you're any board leaders that want to sit, it's a good opportunity to meet with the businesses. I know Lee Aziniero, who is the town engineer in Mansfield, is going to give a presentation, so hopefully it gets us all on the same page, closer to town meeting when we have to visit Sewer.
Jim, where is that going to be?
That's at the Tri-Chamber main office, which is on Main Street. I think it's 280, uh, I'm sorry, 280 School Street.
Thank you.
Yep. I wanted to talk a little bit about the Town Common sign. I know that was something that came in front of us a meeting so ago, and there's been a lot of discussion. When something like a proposal comes from, it came in front of us from DPW Director and Town Manager, and it was presented as a concept, and it was in kind of cooperation with the Lions Club. And if you know the Lions Club, a very well-respected community group that's done a lot of good work in town. So what I'm asking is, let it go through the process. The historic commission is going to be meeting to discuss it on Monday night, and then we have it on our agenda also the following Tuesday, I think it was February 5th penciled in. So, you know, I know there's a lot of opinions out there, but let's just let it run the process, and, you know, we gave our opinion. It may come back, the same proposal may come back different, or it may not come back at all, but just bear with us, and that's the process, and I think it's a good process. The, one other item I wanted to discuss, I was approached by some of the representatives from the, if you want to call them the victims, from the allegations of Sheehan from a decade, many decades ago. And the concern is, it's been kind of silent again on the town. We've been wrapped up in a lot of different issues on the Board of Selectmen's table, but I wanted to assure them that I am speaking frequently with our police chief, and I think what the status is right now is they're kind of going through round two. The tree's been shaken a little bit with all the press, and people may be more comfortable to speak. So it is, it is still going forward, and we are in contact with the district attorney in working through the investigation. Mark and I were invited to sit in on a session later on this week with the victims, and we graciously said that would be fine, to hear it firsthand and let them know that we are still working on it. I think it may have been in the paper, but just after the New Year's, the Board of Selectmen, in cooperation with Kevin Pecos, who drafted up a town policy, which we did not have before, in cooperation with the chief and district attorney, and town council reviewed it. So we are implementing a town-wide policy for town employees, and it takes the gray out of who, when, and how things are reported, and that wasn't in effect before. I know it's in effect with the school systems, but not our regular town hall employees, so, and it's specifically recreation and things on that side. So we are taking it seriously, and it is still moving forward. One other thing I wanted to talk about, the Town Managers Act, it, if you recall, this is something that we've been trying to get going for quite some time, and the Town Managers Act is something that's specific to Foxborough. It's not specific to all of the towns. We hired Kevin under the Town Managers Act, and he's implementing the Strong Town Managers Act. And I think it surprised a few people of the far-reaching reach that the town manager has. So Lorraine has put a committee together, and she'll be presenting that at our February 26th meeting. And you want to spend a minute just to kind of update what to expect?
Yeah. Plan on having a panel discussion that will include some members of the original Town Government Study Group, who will provide us with a history of how we brought that special legislation forward, and the background to that. And then also, we'll have an attorney, at least one attorney, and an acting strong town manager also participating in the discussion. And I'd like, if the members of the board, if you could send me any questions in advance of the, of that meeting.
Is this going to be a public meeting?
Yes.
So we can just all attend if you want to, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
It's part of our regular selectmen's meeting on the 26th of February. And so if everyone could send me their questions in advance, I could compile them and send them out to the participants, the panel participants, so that they have it in advance. And take it from there.
Okay. And just a couple, thank you, a couple other items that are coming up in the next couple hearings in the next month or so. Next week, we're going to be talking about the annual town meeting. Thursday night, a meeting with our town moderator and the chairman of the advisory committee to talk about how we can work more effectively maybe at town meetings, and I'll bring that information back as well. And I think the topic is going to be, do we leave well enough alone, or discuss moving town meetings to a Saturday? And I think we've probably got all input as much as we're going to get up to this point, so we'll figure out what we're going to do at the next meeting on that. The State Gaming Commission is coming on February 26th. We've got confirmation, he's coming at 7:30. And other things, capital budget, annual town meeting, warrant review, Disabilities Commission, and the Revolution schedule, so we're going to be packed over the next couple, couple weeks, so. All right, that's it for the update, and, oh, actually, I jumped right into that. Citizens' input, is there anyone that wants to come to the microphone and say anything? Okay, back on track, being just about 7:15. Chief, do you want to present on the breathalyzer?
Uh-oh, we're all getting a breathalyzer. Good evening, everyone. The grant was a result of Deputy Chief John Chandler actually being in a meeting. We've been having monthly safety meetings, and Maya, who is our insurance carrier, is always offering to provide different types of services, training, as well as the potential of grants to enhance the safety and the operation of town departments. Deputy Chief Chandler approached me after a conversation with Jeff Sienna, who's our safety rep that visits with us on a regular basis, whether we should pursue to get additional portable breath testing machines, given the volume of people that we're dealing with at times at Gillette Stadium events. I encouraged him to do so, and at first, Jeff had reported he wasn't sure whether it would fall under the guidelines, but John drafted some additional information for them to consider, and as a result, we were able to obtain five additional portable breath testing machines. Why that is important is, it now allows us, rather than just having a few machines available where the people are actually processed and booked, we have preliminary testing stations at the wagons where people are brought to, to try and encourage them, if indeed they are not impaired, to take the portable breath test, which would give us a more scientific method of determining whether they're incapacitated. So I borrowed one. John Hannan, who manages our breath testing equipment, was just in the process of verifying that these are up to standard, and allowed me to have one, just to see the, it's a newest model that they have. And more importantly, with each breath test, we're required by the State Office of Alcohol Testing to maintain the test results on every test that's given on the machine. John was telling me the test results of some of our clients on Sunday were significantly higher than the norm, although crowd behavior was exceptional, given the size of the 68,000 fans that were there at the game. Things went very well. Again, trying to make sure that the town leverages our capacity by utilizing grants, free training. At the end of the month, we're having the driver simulator into the Public Safety Building. I know that both myself and Chief Hatfield will be having different staff members go through both a classroom exercise, as well as the driver simulator, again, to improve skills, make officers and firemen more aware of driving dangers, and hopefully reduce potential motor vehicle crashes that could occur. So, that's where we are right now.
Fantastic.
Awesome.
Any questions? One, and I say this with the, not to look a gift horse in the mouth, but I know we've gone through this on other grants that we've gotten, that is free, and the five of them are free, the training and the personnel and all that stuff, a cost over time to run that?
Actually, no, we're required to maintain officers to have alcohol training updates. In fact, within the past two weeks, we had five officers whose certifications would have expired at the end of 2012, and they attended a regional training that was given right over on the Ponson Street at the Regional Academy that's still running there. In fact, we have an officer in in-service training this week, and for the balance of their schedule, we'll have one or two officers attending. The only time overtime has occurred, if we have to backfill someone's shift because they're detailed to attend a training session.
Very good.
Our insurance company only funds this grant program efforts that have the prospect of reducing claims, thus saving us money and their money. The reason these are so significant, and as the chief says, it took a couple times to convince them to fund this, is because this now gives us the capability to be a lot more sure when we bring people into custody right out there at the point of arrest, that they're over the legal limit. We can't do that without these portable units. It gives us a much higher level of protection from liability lawsuits, where people would claim that they were grabbed and they weren't really drunk. So Maya's initial inclination was not to fund it, but after John did some more work, and some of us spoke to them personally, they saw the value of this in terms of reducing claims potential for false arrests and civil rights violation, and then they were very happy to fund them. If these prevent one civil rights claim, that is a massive savings for the town, so we're very enthusiastic about having these.
What would you consider the legal limit if somebody's at an event walking? It's not, it wouldn't be compared to driving, would it be?
Actually, Mark, it's laid out in the law itself, as to which is a presumptive impairment is a reading of .10 and above. A reading of .5 or below, there's no presumption, in fact, the presumption is that you're not impaired, and you'd be free to go. Between the higher than .5 and less than .1, then you could use the standard sobriety test to further make a determination whether the person was impaired, but that would be up to the officer's judgment. The key thing, we don't ordinarily just pick on somebody that's walking, it's their behavior while they're walking, or their inability to walk that brings the person to our attention.
Okay. Good, impressive. Anyone else?
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the continued public hearing doesn't start until 7:30, so let's go into some of the action items. We have minutes from January 8th.
Move to approved minutes of January 8th.
Second.
I just wanted to add one thing. On page 5, very bottom, second to last paragraph, I had spoken about the fact that I thought we needed to discuss public safety and the, you know, potential for mitigation. So I just wanted to have a sentence inserted, that the original public safety mitigation for Patriot Place did not include a large venue like Toby Keith's, and that this, as the 14th license, just adds to the need for review of the impact of public safety. On public safety.
Yeah, that was discussed. Any other comments? Motion was made by Linda, a seconded by Mark. More discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. We have a taxicab license for one taxi for Hussein Schuman.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion?
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Sandy, we have these checked by the chief, right?
Yes. The taxis themselves are inspected, and the drivers, the quarry, they go for it.
Okay, could the board make that approval, subject to the chief's approval, because I don't see that in the package?
Yeah.
It's already been, it's been, uh...
Did he approve?
Yeah.
All right.
John Chandler's signature's on here.
Yep. It's got liability, inspection, you can't, the whole thing.
Okay.
Certification, inspection.
Oh, I'm sorry, I see it now.
Okay, so motion was made, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. We've got a letter from Peter St. Laurent, who is the longtime Board of Foxborough Recreation, and he is offering his letter of resignation with thanks to Debbie Giadino and her group. And the letter is just his personal commitments with work and family, a little onerous right now, so. Motion to accept with gratitude?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I'll send a letter to Peter on behalf of the boards, accepting with regrets, and I'll just tell the boards, I've had occasion to work with the Rec Commission on a number of occasions on different things, and Peter's been an outstanding leader for them, done an absolutely fantastic job, and he's going to be missed, no doubt about it.
Yeah, he has done a fantastic, and just for a point of clarification, when I said "accept with gratitude," with gratitude for his service, and yours is regret that.
And regret for leading the way.
I got that.
He will be missed. We have an application for Reach the Beach Relay on May 17th and 18th, and they've done it before, and there's maps and...
Signed.
Signed by Chief O'Leary and Chief Hatfield. And I know this has been an issue in other races, but it does not look like they're closing any roads like they had in the past with different races.
Motion to accept, please, Reach the Beach Relay race of May 17th and 18th, 2013, as outlined.
Second.
Motion made by Mark, seconded by Lorraine. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. And vote to petition the General Court, this is from the Board of Selectmen, to amend Chapter 5 of the Acts of 2004, an act providing for the selectmen, town manager, former government in the town of Foxborough, in accordance with the vote of Article 8 of December 11, 2012. And this is a letter, I think, that I need to sign, but Article 8 of the Special Town Meeting on December 11th, I think that was taking the conservation out of the Special Town Managers Act.
No, this is the DPW consolidation.
That was the December one, that was the Special Town?
Yep, George is right.
Okay. All right. Any further, do we have a motion?
Motion to authorize Jim to sign the letter for the filing with the General Court.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
There's a letter in the signature folder for you.
Thank you, George, for clarifying that. That's action items, a few more minutes. I don't think there's anything that we can take out of order that's going to be a couple minutes.
A special town meeting shouldn't take two seconds, Jimmy. The 9 o'clock town manager, Kevin Pecos, special town meeting cancellation when we hit down.
Two-second item, yep.
Yeah, okay.
Go to... Mr. Chairman, as the board is aware from last week, the original impetus for the special was the regional sewer project. Mansfield and Norton were unable to get, Mansfield was unable to get a quorum when it tried in the fall, both decided not to try specials in the spring. Word of that came to us just last week, thereby giving us the time to go to the annual, which is better, because it gives us time to communicate the finance plan to the public, make sure all the boards are in agreement. It just allows for more orderly process than what we would have had. So, Water Sewer Commission is in full concurrence, and I recommend to the board that you cancel the special town meeting on March 4th.
Motion to cancel the town meeting on March 4th?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? There was one item that was an easement, that was with respect to the library, but they're, that's not going to put them in a precarious situation?
I didn't get anything back from them, but I did talk to Dick Gelman, Town Council, who's been dealing with them, as well as all the department heads, which would include Jerry, to ask if any of the proposed articles, you know, if it'd be a hardship, and I got nothing back from anybody, so I left it in the affirmative, they would have to respond that it was. So I didn't get anything back, so I'm assuming not.
Yeah, okay. All right, motion made and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries to cancel the special.
Okay, we've got four minutes. I want to do one more. I don't think Fire Department fees?
We got two minutes.
Yeah, no, the Fire Department fees. Why don't we invite the, our special town council to the table? Before we reopen the hearing? Welcome.
Thank you, Brian Falk, attorney from Merrick O'Connell and Worcester.
Okay, great, thank you for coming.
Sure.
So we have a continued hearing, we'll open in a few minutes, but you're a special town council, our previous town council had a conflict, that handled it before. So I understand Kevin solicited.
Yep. Brian is experienced, has done a number of liquor hearings, has been town council in a number of communities, and comes very well recommended, and has a strong background in liquor licensing law, so we welcome him. Hopefully, Lou, our resident expert, special counsel on liquor, will be back with us for hearings in the future, but Brian graciously agreed to pinch-hit, and with little notice, but has shown great expertise, so that's much appreciated.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
You. So... Do I have a card?
I do. The word 7:30, I know we read it into the records back in November, but could you read the legal notice again?
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, November 20th, 2012, at 7:00 PM, in the Town Hall Meeting Room, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts, pursuant to its licensing authority in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws annotated, Chapter 138, Sections 23, 64, and 67, and all amendments thereto. The purpose of the hearing will be to review and discuss information concerning alleged violations of Chapter 138 that occurred at the Waxy O'Connor's, 121 Main Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts. All interested parties are invited to attend.
Thank you. I think what we've done in the past worked pretty well, why don't, Kevin, I'll turn it over to you a little bit, and I think what we did before was, we would have our police present what the findings were to us, and then we can invite the applicant to respond.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, typically what the board does is have a special counsel swear in, anyone who will be a potential witness. Then Sergeant Noonan will read into the record the police report, so the board is aware of what it is you're dealing with. While he's doing that, I will hand around to you all the previous reports and materials regarding this, meaning the prior violations at Waxy's, the outcomes, which I know you're all familiar with, but that, and the current police report. Once the police report is read into the record, counsel for the town, counsel for Waxy's, myself, have been engaging in a series of discussions over the course of the last two, three weeks, and counsel for Waxy's would like to present the board with a settlement offer, to see if this is something the board is interested in. If it is, with some small variation thereon, then the board would accept it without any further evidentiary proceedings at the hearing, and the document would be signed. This is an actual written settlement offer. On the other hand, if the board is not accepting of the offer, then you would go on to a full evidentiary hearing, where you would take evidence, offer the opportunity for counsel to cross-examine town witnesses, present witnesses for Waxy's, give special counsel the opportunity to cross-examine Waxy's witnesses, and you would at that time have to decide if you want to proceed with that tonight, which would mean essentially replacing that with most of the rest of your agenda, if not all of it, we'd have to schedule all that for another night. Or alternatively, scheduling the hearing, continuing it tonight, and scheduling this hearing to a later date, and then going forward with the rest of the business you have scheduled tonight. The hope, and clearly the way we've structured the agenda for tonight, is that the board will find the settlement offer to be acceptable, or close enough, that with some small negotiations, you can close an agreement. Calling that in this sort of a... Calling that, in this sort of a settlement, it has to be acceptable to both parties. It's offered, but, you know, it's not an offer to do with it what you want. It's an offer, here's what we'll accept. And the efficacy of that is that you impose a sanction as is offered without having to worry about an ABCC appeal and all that. We've done many, many of these. And on the other hand, you've also done full-blown hearings. So, again, the procedure is Counsel will swear the witnesses. The report will be read into the record. And Waxsey's Attorney Frank will make an offer to the Board.
Okay. And just larger picture on our agenda. We've got a few items, but I don't see anything that's critical in here that can't be pushed to another week. There's nothing time-sensitive, with the exception, I just don't know, under executive session, labor negotiations, whereas we can do those very late or put them off to a different week.
Yeah, there's one we'd have to do this evening because I have a bargaining session on Wednesday and I need to dialogue with the Board. The other one could get put off to later.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, let you proceed then, thank you.
I'll swear the witnesses.
Witnesses, please rise. Raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you've given in this proceeding shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Sergeant Noonan will read the incident report into the record so the Board knows exactly what it is you're dealing with.
Thank you. On September 27th, 2012, under the direction of Chief O'Leary, I conducted an alcohol compliance check at all the licensed liquor establishments in town. Prior to conducting the alcohol compliance check, a notice of the future compliance check was hand-delivered to Waxsey O'Connor's on August 3rd. A newspaper article was printed in the Foxborough Reporter on August 30th, again notifying all the liquor establishments that an upcoming compliance check would be conducted. Both the letter and the newspaper article gave notice that during this compliance check that the underage operatives would be entering their establishment with a valid underage ID, which clearly indicates that they are underage 21. We notified them, let them know, and gave them enough time to address it with their staff and adapt any issues that they may have. Prior to conducting the compliance check, I read the Foxborough Police Department General Order in regards to alcohol compliance checks with identification with the underage operative and the undercover Stoughton Police Officer that assisted during this operation. Each item of the General Order was read and both the underage operative and the police officer stated they understood what their goal was. The main objective of reading the instructions is to make sure that they understood that their goal... Their job was not to trick anyone. And that's what we said out and notified the establishments that we had no intention of tricking them. We just wanted to make sure that they were doing their job. The underage operative, when asked, stated that she's never been to Foxborough, so therefore she's never been to any establishment in Foxborough. Photographs were taken of the underage operative. And she also took a breathalyzer test where she registered a point 000, which meant that she had no alcohol in her system. At approximately 7:30, the underage operative with the undercover police officer entered Waxsey O'Connor's. The underage officer approached the bar and took a seat at the bar. After a few minutes, no bartender came over, no one took notice of her. An older gentleman, two seats down, obtained the bartender's attention. The bartender came over, asked the underage operative what she wanted. And the bartender subsequently served her a Bud Light bottle without asking for identification. The underage operative sat in her bar stool, the beer in front of her, for approximately a minute, pulled the beer closer to her, and then left. The undercover police officer confirmed everything that the underage operative stated.
Thank you, Sergeant. And just if you could, for the record, just state your name because I think you missed it.
Sergeant Richard Noonan, N-O-O-N-A-M.
Thank you. Is there anything else that the Foxborough Police Department wanted to add? That was it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
At this point, I would follow the recommendation of Town Manager. Ask the attorney for the applicant come forward.
Okay, thank you. Is there someone here from the applicant? Welcome.
Good evening.
Evening.
Attorney Frank Spillane, Waxsey O'Connor. With me here tonight is Mark Bolander, whose family's a part-owner in the establishment, as well as Paul McKenna, who also owns additional amount in the establishment.
Kevin, excuse me, can you just get the mic closer to Frank? That's all.
And Joseph Lothrup, who is the manager of Waxsey O'Connor's here in Foxborough at this time. And we've also filed with the Town today, an application to get him named on the license. The description that Sergeant Noonan gave, our investigation of what occurred there, is accurate. From we've... Indications we've had, the bartender on-site at that evening was waved down by a patron who frequents the establishment many times with a number of people, all of whom are always of age. He never allows anyone to drink that's not of age with him. The bartender at the time assumed incorrectly, when that patron waved him down, waved her down, excuse me, that she was with them, went over, asked for the order, and provided the alcoholic beverage without asking for the license. So, we are here to admit to that violation. There was certain circumstances, but again, in any case, it was a violation. The violation has been taken very seriously by Waxsey O'Connor's. A number of things have occurred since that time. The employee in question was fired. She was a good employee, but nonetheless was fired. Remaining staff, all employees, were retrained and recertified in tips. We have all that in list of all employees at the restaurant. Also, a license scanner, an advanced ID detection scanner, was obtained and is on location. All the procedures have been reviewed by the new management as continuing ongoing to improve all procedures with regard to the service of alcohol. Staff meetings have been held with regard to the violation and review of their alcohol beverage service policy. The owners and new management and the staff consider the violation seriously and are taking it as such. The major change, however, has been the firing of the manager, Gordon Hyde, who I think most individuals here know. He was the longtime manager here and was also a regional manager. He was fired right around the time of the incident. He and his wife were also part-owners at the time. And as of January 1st, they were bought out of the Foxborough establishment and actually bought out of all of the establishments with regard to Waxsey O'Connor's. Just for your information, right now, there are a total of eight Waxsey O'Connor's. Four of them are in New England, three of them are in Massachusetts. The other ones in Massachusetts are Woburn and Lexington, as well as Foxborough. Neither the Woburn or Lexington establishments have had any issues with regard to their liquor license. The ownership didn't get a full understanding of what was going up in here in Foxborough until this summer, when they brought up Paul McKinnon to really oversee not only Foxborough, but the regional. And during that investigation, determined that Mr. Gordon was not handling his responsibility with regard to Foxborough and the company in his fiduciary capacity. And that resulted, again, in September, his firing as manager. And eventually, he was bought out. Other items I'd like to note is, again, we'd like to acknowledge that violation. Mr. Rolliter is here to acknowledge that for the ownership and would like to get all the procedures in place so that this never happens again, or anything else. And prior to the previous violations that I think the Board knows about, Mr. Gordon ran the establishment more of a nightclub. Under the new management and the operation of the restaurant, they always really want to emphasize the food. They want a restaurant, they want quality food. A new cook was actually hired approximately a year ago. And they're gonna be bringing on another cook, new cook, to review and improve the menu, the food, and the service at the establishment. The cameras that are in the facility, previously under the prior management, were trained more on the registers and the cooking area and the serving area. They're going to be relocated so they can keep an eye on patrons. And so, any recording of trouble will be available. They've hired a security staff. One individual was an owner of a security firm for approximately 20 years. He did an assessment with regard to the establishment and made recommended changes as to how things are operated. Just so the Board knows, the security staff is on Friday and Saturday nights. Sundays, if there's a Patriots game or any other special occasion. Thursday, if there's karaoke or any other special occasion on Thursday night. Between when the time this violation occurred, the new management, Paul McKinnon again and Joseph Lothrup, have met with the police chief a number of times, the health agent, planning board member, the Town Manager, and other Town employees to get a real understanding of the issues that are involved and were involved in the past. And they're committed to changing how the establishment is run again, so it's more of a restaurant. And the food quality is something that they're focusing on to improve greatly. As I stated earlier, Waxsey's is a family-owned business. It's owned by two families. The violations, not only this one, but prior ones, was a poor reflection on that, on this restaurant. All the restaurants, their business, as well as their companies and families, and they're committed to making changes here. They want to set the high bar, a high bar, so that the expectations are higher and different than previously. Waxsey's is an anchor within Chestnut Green. We hope to help all the other businesses continue to flourish down there. And I think, I don't know if Chief O'Leary is here or not, but there's a report called the 24J. I know Kevin's familiar with it, with regard to reports made to police as to where people last had a drink. In 2011, there were over 12 reports, especially early on. In 2012, there was only one. So, they really tried to improve. The violation that happened in September was a violation, but it was an isolated incident. When Gordon was being fired, there was a lot of upheaval. Again, they should have kept an eye on the ball, though. And we hope that the Board understands that and they're committed to making the changes. In talking with the Town Manager and Town Council, who forgot this violation, and we talked about our proposed settlement, we went through a lot of things. Again, we'd agree to the finding of violation of serving an alcohol beverage to a person under the age of 21. We will not deal with the violation. We'll make a gift to the Town, covering all costs with regard to legal fees and police office and such. Waxsey's will maintain that electronic identification scanner, again, the advanced ID detection system that they do have and have already purchased. They'll develop or actually improve the written policy they have with regard to the use of the scanner and the criteria for requesting identification from the patrons. And approximately a month after the agreement is signed, we'll provide that to this Board, the Town Manager, and the Police Chief, their review and comments to be incorporated. Waxsey's will also conduct in-house training for all employees with regard to the rules and procedures for serving alcohol beverages every six months for two years. And we've designated April and October of 2013, 14, for there. So, there's designated months within which you have to do it six months apart. And thereafter, if the Town Manager deems it necessary, he'll continue to do that. Again, we'll have security staff on Fridays and Saturdays from 9:00 until 1:00 PM closing and during all special events to our large numbers of patrons. We'll also hire detail as required by the Police Chief and his judgment. And we'll come back in front of this Board on March 5th or any day the Board determines, to give you a staff report with regard to how we're meeting the agreement and license compliance. Thereafter, we'll also submit to the Board, the Town Manager and the Police Chief, on June 1st, September 1st, and December 1st of this year, a written staff report detailing the compliance with agreement and the licensee. And finally, we're proposing a suspension of their license for 16 days, starting immediately tomorrow, January 23rd, until Tuesday, February 7th, which again will be during the football weekend, sadly, with Patriots. But they want to get the suspension behind them right away so they can move forward with getting their establishment up and running again.
Thank you, appreciate that. Kevin, do you have a copy of that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I believe you have a copy of the settlement agreement in your packages, don't you?
No.
Did you just hand it out?
The old one.
When you just handed out?
Yeah, the old one.
Just handed out?
It'd be on the back of it. It's under the legal notice?
Yep, it should be. If you could check. Looks like this says under the top settlement agreement. Okay, well, I will hand that around. It's what basically... You do, okay.
In the packet from...
In the packet, right under the legal notice. Not the one Kevin handed out?
Yeah, but this is from 2011.
2011, that's the old one.
That's the old one.
Okay, I was just reading the title, okay.
This was... This is either the first or second violation. This is the one from 2011.
Yeah, you don't have any one dated?
No.
2013, my apologies. Okay, we'll get that made for you right now, but Brian can probably go over with you.
That's it, thank you.
Brian, do you want to run over it?
Sure. It's sort of going through what Attorney Spillane just outlined as their proposed settlement terms, sort of the order that the settlement agreement goes. This is very similar to the settlement agreement that the Board entered with Waxsey's in May of 2011. Again, the licensee would be agreeing to a finding of a violation and agreeing not to appeal that finding, agreeing to a proposed 16-day suspension of the license, covering the Town's costs associated with this hearing and the investigation. Stipulation that they would maintain their existing electronic scanner and come up with an updated set of procedures for using that scanner and for the criteria by which staff would be checking IDs of patrons. See, all servers are required to have tip certification. The licensee would also be agreeing, again, to in-house training of the staff twice a year for at least two years. And so, as I said, as Attorney Spillane outlined, that's the basics of the agreement. There's some boilerplate from the previous settlement that we carried forward, but it's very similar to the agreement that you entered with Waxsey's in 2011.
Thank you. Attorney Spillane, is there anything else you want to add or your clients want to say at the table before we start to discuss?
I'm not going as long as Frank, but... No. I'm Mark, one of the owners, I was here before. I'd like to start with what I'm going to say to you tonight. The first thing I said to my attorney when I left here the last time and I got into her car and I rode back to the pub was, "I'm sorry, I didn't know what I was walking into here 18 months ago." Regarding the last time we were here, audience interest to police in... Regarding the, the last time we were here, audience was the police in a bar. I was just dumbfounded. It took a while to get our group, I would say, regrouped or whatever, um, but I could see the writing was on the wall going forward and we had to make changes. The legality of things were quite difficult. At the time of the incident, there was a lot of, uh, turmoil going on with lawyers and stuff like this. When what happened, well unfortunately happened or whatever, and that's why we're here tonight is, uh, to the mind of us serving an alcoholic beverage in one of our establishments. We as a group have a pretty impeccable record, um, outside of Foxborough, I'm, I'm sorry to say. With licensing authorities, um, code compliance, um, food safety, we, we basically like had tried to have a zero tolerance policy and we have regular staff meetings, issues that come up. We, in all the groups, this, like any probably, we're not a chain, we're like a small family-run place. We like to go into the communities outside of the bigger cities, in the suburbs where there's parking, where people have to drive. So it's, it's not, uh, common law of places that have over-serving. We will cut people off and we do, uh, take training and tip certification in different states, uh, quite seriously. I would rather have had this hearing back in November. As you can gather from a, a business point of view and from the company, we made the decision that we're gonna have to hire somebody new, which happened to be Joe, um, who's been very eager and aggressive to get going of what we're gonna do in the community, we sponsored some things, um, but this hit us for six. And if you understand the business where you're, you're, you say, "What are we gonna do?" It says, "Well, we can't really market, we don't know what's coming up." And then contrary to belief, some people saw, uh, have heard that we were, Waxies was just hanging in there. We're not hanging in there, we're hanging in to go forward. We've tried, um, we have marketing plans and ready to go in motion, but like with the hea- this hearing that is nearly into February and with suspensions and trying to retrain staff and a new computer system, we're just eager to get going. It's, um, we don't intend to go anywhere. And that's, um, as, as Attorney Spillane said, we, we have, we hired a new chef and we're talking about another chef coming in. Again, he's like, "Well, what's happening?" And we said, "Well, we gotta go in front of the hearing or whatever, we don't know, because he has to leave another job to, to come to Waxies group." And we, we totally understand that, so we, we apologize to the community for the past and for what happened at the moment and to the selectman for being in front of you again here tonight, you know, it was costed the, the town or, and the community. But, um, I hope that you, you'll see by some of our actions, and wasn't that much, you know, we did sponsor a couple of few things. We wanna get back into the community because that's where the life and blood of every pub is supposed to be part of the community, not supposed to be a nightclub or whatever. That the board was taken to consideration for some of the words I've said tonight and our efforts or whatever. And, uh, hopefully, you'll look at our agreement and we think it's, it's a fair agreement. We've, the last time, I think, we suffered, not suffered, we took 60 days on the chin or whatever, early closing, that was still life and deaths, over Friday and Saturday night business. No bar could survive without that. And we're still here, so we'd like to try and make some type of impact on the community. Competition's gonna be tough, there's a, I hear there's a new bar opening up or whatever, but that's, that's day-to-day running a business, you know what I mean? You have to just go move forward. So, um, thank you for your time and I hope you take consideration of our offer.
Thank you, Mark. Got it? Okay. So now, I think we're at a crossroads. We can close the public hearing and then go into discussions. Uh, once the public hearing is closed, we most likely cannot take new information.
Mr. Chairman, before you close the public hearing, you wanna do a couple things. Because it is a public hearing, even if you take a settle, a structured settlement, you still wanna ask if there's any public input, uh, folks that would like to address the board. And I would urge the board not to close the public hearing until you've done that and decided if you're interested in this or not. Just in case there's public comment, you wouldn't wanna preclude that if the board is gonna negotiate the terms. Once you get to the point where it's clear you've either negotiated the terms or you're not gonna be successful, um, then that would be the time when you'd actually want to conduct the full-blown public hearing. So you can't do that if you've already closed it.
Okay. Fair enough. Um, we, we can discuss it amongst ourselves, but let's, it's probably wise at this point where, as Kevin says, it is a public hearing, it's here. If there's anyone in the public that would like to come up to the microphone and state their opinion or, um, what have you. Mr. Brown?
David Brown, 17. I guess my, my kind of question is to understand, what did they do? I mean, a lot of the things they're talking about doing now were also, I believe, in the last violation, the retraining and these sort of things. Was that completed last time? Was it lip service? Uh, I don't know if we have any way of knowing that or not. And the other question I have, and I know they're working on developing their procedures, uh, for the scanner device that, that they're gonna have, um, you know, what are their thoughts on that now? Is it gonna be used every night? Is it gonna be used at the door? I mean, how, how are they planning to use it? Or at least thinking about it at this point?
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Yes, sir.
Hello, John Romanowski, 30 Cross Street, longtime resident of Foxborough. Uh, I, I listened to the story. We've been, uh, frequenting the pub for quite some time. And I do have to agree that in the earlier days, we were, we were going to the Waxie O'Connor and it was more of a nightclub, kind of an older crowd, we didn't really, uh, wanna go there. But with the new management, and I see the change, the change in the menu, the venue is, uh, doing a lot more for Foxborough, it's, um, I, I definitely have to agree with what Frank has to say. It's, uh, it has changed, they are, they are making a, a big impact and, and we'd like to say that, uh, we'd like to see them stay. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay. So there was one question that was proposed, uh, let's discuss it amongst ourselves and if we've got, uh, more questions, we can kinda compile them and get them all answered at once.
Well, I think the first thing is if we're interested in the settlement or if we're gonna go with a huge hearing, so I guess that's kinda on the table first, correct?
If that's what the board wants to go through, yeah.
Well, I have a, a question. If it's the time, you wanna hear it? If they've gotten rid of a partner, he was a corporate partner, correct, Frank?
Correct.
Isn't this justified new management? Isn't this changed the whole significance of the, the alignment of violations, everything? The, the man that was in charge of the restaurant is no longer nor is associated with the restaurant at all? He's not an officer anymore in the restaurant?
Agree or disagree with me, but the way I look at it is the management has absolutely changed. The ownership has changed and we'll be filing a change of ownership forms with the town shortly. But the majority, um, ownership interest is approximately the same. So it would be still, and Kevin would agree, under the same umbrella. But what we're trying to also, um, get across to the board is that, um, uh, there's been a, um, a great change shift in how the establishment is running, the culture within it especially. They wanna run a very responsible, uh, family, community-oriented restaurant and not how it was run, um, previously, as the gentleman said, close to a nightclub. And it was in that process, it's been in that process, um, for a while. But again, the, the main issue that was involved, Mr. Hyde had to really be removed for the establishment to move on, and the ownership recognized that. Sadly, that occurred around the same time as his violation. As I put it to them bluntly, I told them, you know, "I, I think you had a rudderless ship here for a while." And the violation occurred at the same time, because of it or not because of it, it doesn't matter, but it, it did occur. But the overall ownership is still the same, so the violation is under the same umbrella. But what we're trying to emphasize is management and the way it operates has changed.
Would you agree with me, Kevin and Brian? About the overall?
Based on, uh, the conversations that we've had, um, I would say that what Attorney Spillane just represented, um, is a factual representation of what's taken place. And frankly, as I said, uh, to Attorney Spillane is, were that not the case, had there not been a change of manager, had there not been a change of stockholders, um, had there not been all of the other things put into place, then this would've been a fourth violation and very likely, um, would've resulted in a revocation. And based on my experience with ABCC with a number of these cases, you likely would've been sustained because it's such an overwhelming, uh, presentation. But, um, frankly, with all the steps that have been taken here, it appears that the ownership is making a sincere effort to impose on themselves, what they're offered, a very substantial, um, penalty to undertake a lot of substantive actions to try and, um, operate a good restaurant that's a credible, that's, um, uh, a credible operation and a credit to the community. And frankly, I would, I would suggest to the board that it's one of two things. If you're of a mind that if the charges, if true, and you don't know yet if they are, because that would only be determined after a full hearing, but if you're of a mind that if the charges were full, that that, given the past history, merits revocation, then I would say you're not interested in this settlement agreement. On the other hand, if it's your belief that enough things have happened, and I would represent to you that I believe that, that they deserve another chance and this would be absolutely the last chance, then a settlement agreement structured like this is a very, um, strengthful offer. This is a strong offer. It is a 16-day penalty with many, many other conditions. And frankly, when you're putting on the record the third violation, or in this case, the fourth violation, um, it doesn't really matter whether it's a 10-day suspension, a 300-day suspension, or whatever it is. If there's agreement that there'd be no contest that the suspension is on the record, irrespective of how long the suspension is, if there is another event after this within the two-year window, remember your bylaw provides three years, you've got one violation from ABCC that will age, it will toll in about two months off the three-year window. You've got two others that this board conducted 14, 15 months ago that are in your file. Those will stay on the record for another year and a half or more. So basically, if you decide that you're gonna give this establishment and the new management another chance, you're basically saying to them, if there are any incidents in roughly oh, about the next two years, you're out of business. And if there aren't, welcome back to the community, hope you're gonna be a good, responsible, contributing corporate citizen. That's basically the choice before you.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin. Board, other board discussion? Thoughts?
So are we, are we discussing if we're interested in talking about the settlement or not? Or are we gonna go into?
Let's cross that bridge first. I think you're right. If, if, if there's an attitude or i- if it's, people are receptive to work towards this negotiated settlement, then let's get that off the table first. If people are not willing to do it for whatever reason, um, then we'll find out now before we go ahead, so. I mean, I can call people and go around, or if people just feel comfortable speaking?
Are we gonna vote on it and hold it as a, if it's a three-two, we proceed in one direction? Does it have to be unanimous or how are we gonna handle? I mean, that's the question.
Maybe Brian has something to say.
All I would suggest is that if there's an inclination of the board to suspend rather than revoke, you consider doing the, the suspension through the settlement agreement, where you have the licensee agreeing not to appeal and licensee coming forward with proposals as to what they're willing to do. It's a much easier, uh, road for you to go down. If you're more inclined to consider revocation, um, you probably would want to, um, do that on your own, they're certainly not going to agree to that. What I would add, though, with regard to a full-blown evidentiary hearing, you have the attorney for the applicant and the applicant, or, I'm sorry, the licensee, um, stipulating before you, um, that they, um, um, agreed that there was a violation, violation that the, is in the police report, um, they have assented to. So you, you can, the, the need for a full evidentiary hearing tonight might not be quite as strong, more of a discussion of, um, past violations, which are on record in terms of how that would enter into your decision-making. But again, if the board is inclined to suspend rather than revoke, I suggest that you, um, have that discussion, um, through the settlement agreement proposal, um, which would be much easier for you to go down.
What about?
Thank you.
How does this affect us if this is to happen to another establishment? Does this case log make us?
Precedent, if you may?
Precedent, yeah. Make us, if we give them another chance, do we have to, by law, give the, a next opportunity to somebody else? Is it creating a whole nother open door of going to five instead of staying at four?
I don't believe so. I mean, the thing to keep in mind is the board has broad discretion when granting, modifying, suspending, revoking licenses, but very broad discretion. Um, and your own regulations, you give yourself guidelines with respect to, um, sanctions. You're not bound to them, they're guidelines. And so I think you, you would retain the freedom to make decisions as you see fit. Each license is different, each licensee is different, and each, um, set of circumstances is different.
Okay. So with respect to other establishments, let's end that discussion now and, and I guess put it in the category that every establishment would stand on its own merit. And let's just focus on Waxies tonight. Anyone else from the board have an opinion that they would wanna share?
I would consider, um, suspension instead of revocation and, and suggest that we go in that direction. I think the, uh, changes that have been made, that have been made are significant, uh, very different from the last discussion we had, um, when Waxies was in front of us. And I, I think that these, um, these suggestions really indicate a commitment on their part to do things differently. So I'm surprised to hear myself saying this, but I, I am leaning towards a discussion of suspension.
Anyone else?
I, I, I will agree with Lorraine because of the, the one fact that Mr. Hyde is no longer part of the picture with his corporation. And, um, I, I think he was a significant problem in the past with not understanding the laws of Foxborough. And I don't think that the, the, the people that now are operating the business should suffer the degree of consequence that we could put down here tonight because of the fact that they weren't totally aware. I, I remember this gentleman, Mark, wasn't even in the country at the time. I, I might incorrect or correct, I'm not sure. I think he would've just come-
From Florida.
From Florida, alright, he would've just come up from Florida. So he wasn't aware of the whole sensitivity of the situation, and I think he stayed that well tonight, therefore, I, I'm surprised here myself to say this too, but I, I would be inclined to try and work with these people one more time.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just had a question. Uh, when, um, it was stated that the, um, employee was fired for this violation, when you mean fired, does that mean never ever to be rehired?
Correct.
Right, okay.
My thoughts are to, um, you know, go through the settlement agreement, um, and make some recommendations through that. You know, when you talk about revoking the license, it's, it's not just these folks that are here tonight, it's, um, you know, the waiters and the waitresses and, and the cook staff. And the thing that I do wanna state is Frank, you have done, um, represented your client very well this evening. The prior, um, attorney that was here, um, almost fought with the officer, um, basically about the statement that was given, and, um, I didn't appreciate that. I didn't appreciate the fact that the gentleman, um, management team basically sat here and, and didn't say- didn't say anything and left it up to the lawyer to say everything. I appreciate your statement this evening, Mark. I did hear this several months ago about we were getting a new, a new menu to come in and, you know, things are going to change around. And I personally haven't been in there, so I don't know what's changed. Obviously, management has changed. And you know how seriously we take it. And you folks have got to take it as serious as a heart attack. No disrespect on that, but this is, this is hard, but I feel a little better, probably because of the way that Frank presented it and that you actually came and spoke tonight, Mark. It, it helps the cause. So I think I'd be in agreement to, to talk through these, this settlement agreement instead of just of going through the motions of a hearing for, you know, taking the license.
Okay.
Jim, good. Is the, are the, the police in the fire, you know, the public safety people, do they feel that there, there's been an obvious change in the, in the way business is conducted up there? And are they satisfied with the changes that have been made? And do they, would they go along with the?
Do I mean, or Kevin Dean?
Well, could I ask the chief?
Chief Hatfield just said I could also speak for him. Thank you. No, I don't need an engine or anything like that, or a lada truck.
But it would be nice, huh?
But in terms of the, the calls for service to the facility, there's a noticeable decrease in incidents that are occurring, which were radically escalating the last time this particular facility was before the board. So to me, it's evident that there's a, a better, good-faith effort on the part of the new management team to manage the facility and to try and bring about some significant changes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I, I've got a couple of thoughts. I mean, for the two and a half years or so that I've been here, we've spent a tremendous amount of time on Waxies. Our regulations were completely revamped. And if you look at the regulations, it says first, first violation, letter of reprimand, et cetera. Second violation, suspension. Third violation, suspension. Fourth violation, revocation of license. Each step that we went through with Waxies, we said, this is your first violation, we take it seriously. This is your second violation, we take it seriously. I, I truly wish Attorney Spillane was involved before the 11th hour. What I do recall is I recall Attorney Farnsworth not being forthcoming, being evasive, denying it. And violation went from one to two, from two to three. And now there's no 3A and 3B and 3C, it goes to violation. What I'm concerned about is all the other liquor establishments that we have, when we continue to say, one more, you're getting close to the fourth. One more, you're getting close to the fourth. Three strikes, you're going on to the fourth. Then we get to the fourth, and no matter who the applicant or who the establishment is, of course, they're going to come to us and say, we're revamping, we learned the hard way, we get it now. What are you going to say when there's an issue next week and nothing changed? Because, you know, I know businesses slowed down a little bit and they're changing, but when, when we go through the efforts and the police go through the efforts and they hire people outside to kind of police it, we've done everything we can to work with them and we're still getting this. I mean, if you look at this packet, this operative looks like she's 16, she sits at the bar, they give her a beer. If you remember when we went through all the other issues not too long ago, they at least pulled it back or they, or they recognized it. I don't think they're any closer to getting it today than they were, you know, back in June, July, and August. I, I really don't. And, and I think, you know, how many times are we going to say one more? And now we're going on to the fifth violation. And one of those violations from the state is going to drop off. So if something happens again, we're not even close to the fourth again. So-
Again, it is our, it is our guidelines that you're discussing.
I understand, I understand.
And I don't want to talk about any other establishments because everyone is, is different. I mean, they are different. This time, you know, we find the other establishments that let this young girl in. And like you said, you know, some pulled them back, some of them realized it after the fact or whatever. This bartender's gone, just as well as the one from the previous, you know, has been fired. And I, I just, you know, I mean, need to say to the new management that this is it, you know?
But my point is, we've said it before and we've said it before. We really have, in my opinion. I'm just, you know, I've been down, I've been to this dance a couple of times now with the same establishment. And we've given them, you know, take it as serious as a heart attack. We're serious about this. We've written new regulations. You've got three strikes and the fourth one, you're out. We're at the out. And, and I just don't see, you know, as much as I, I like to see any business succeed, I think the detriments of giving them a fifth try on this, it just, it's, it's too much to, to take a chance, in my opinion. I'm just, I'm not considering any, any type of settlement on this, at this point.
I think that if the only changes that were made were started at the level of firing that employee, I would be feeling the same way as you. But I think because there's been a significant change in the management and partial change in the ownership, that, you know, to me, those are serious steps that were taken to turn around a situation that none, those had not been taken before. So I guess I'm just asking that consideration be given to that. These are guidelines. We could someday unfortunately find ourselves in a situation where first violation is going to mean revocation because of the seriousness of it. I think that they're guidelines to help us with these decisions, but this is as serious as all of the other violations. I just think that the steps taken indicate a commitment on their part that this will not happen again because it can't happen again.
It, it was a very difficult hearing last time. It was very difficult. There was a lot of smugness in the room. There was disrespect to the board, the police. It was very difficult to be part of. And there was a lot of pushing and shoving back. And I don't feel that this time around. I, I feel a new presence that, you know, it's time, we're not going to, we're not going to, I could, I could feel it positively that this isn't going to happen again. I just, and I have to go on my gut feeling on that. And I respect everything you say, Jim, because exactly how I figured I'd be coming in here firing, like, you know what, enough's enough, that's it. And I think Lorraine stated it best. That's, I mean, she's been more severe than any of us when it comes to these, you know, violations. And the attorney has said to us that we are, under our guidelines, we can approach anybody as a fourth. And he assures me that if somebody comes in, that they, we can treat them as a, a fourth and revocate, or we can, you know, move forward again. And I, I'm going to go with it on this, this time around. That's it. And I'm not saying, you know, this is it. I'm not going to give you the big speech and the threats. I just think, I think they get it. I think they'll, they'll be an asset to the community instead of a detriment. I think it's, it's going to go one more chance with me on this. And don't let me down, guys, because if it goes that way, because it's, I have to listen to the people. We all sit here and we all have to listen to the constituents in this town. No matter how we vote, we're going to get some nasty phone calls tomorrow, whether it's positive for you or against you. I've had quite a people in the community come up to me, well, people I well respect that do it at Tenure Establishment now and then, said it's changed, Mark, it's changed. You got to listen. Well, they've been boot, you know, out there booting for you too. So last shot, that's it. I'll go with it. And a settlement agreement. I do agree with Linda, though, it needs to be tweaked a little bit. Not much, but a little bit. And don't embarrass us. Don't make it come back here again because I, I really don't want the heat.
Sorry.
Don't make us come back again because who knows what will-
Yeah, yeah, here we go.
Talking about tweaking this agreement, can part of the agreement be if there is another violation, it will be treated as a fourth violation and that's it? Can that be in the settlement?
Yeah. Well, we would want to put the dates in.
It's still the dates.
So it's just automatic with regard to the dates.
It's still our guidelines. And it's still, you know, I think they get it. I'm, I'm not, what I'm saying is, is that, you know, if it happens, if anything happens-
Just to make the board of selectmen and in the public feel a little better about this, that we are taking this seriously. You, you know, the establishment is taking it seriously. And if something else does happen down the road, revocation, that's it. You know?
We wouldn't want to put in the agreement that there's another violation, it'll be revocation, because we don't know what that situation would be. We'd want to have another hearing with, with this board. And this board can then vote to revoke it, but we wouldn't want to put it in there because we don't know what that situation would be per se. And it may or may not be their fault. If it is their fault, and it's within that time limit, you absolutely have that discretion. But if it's within, if it's four years out, well, you look back period is three years, I believe.
Yes.
So it would be as if it's a first violation.
But Attorney Spillane, if these are just our guidelines, why would we need to wait for the three years? Why would, why could we not revoke it? Say three years goes by, it's a clean slate, and then they have an egregious violation, why couldn't we just revoke it at that point?
I don't think that's a fair question for the, for the, so I'll, I'll handle it and certainly defer to Brian. These are your guidelines. You are not bound by them.
He said that.
And I've worked in many communities with guidelines and had boards deviate from them due to the nature of the violation. A first violation serving to a minor is one kind of a violation. A first violation serving to 15 minors who then go out front and have a fistfight and somebody gets stabbed, and I'm drawing from an actual hearing that occurred years ago in the time I work, is a very different kind of a violation, obviously much, much more egregious. So your guidelines are meant to be precisely what they say, guidelines. You are not bound by them. And ABCC would look at them and would say, you have guidelines. But towns don't, frankly. And they're guidelines. They're not restrictions. They're guidelines.
Okay. I guess my question is-
You can do what you think is appropriate as a licensing authority. But bear in mind, anything you decide when it comes to revocation or a not-agreed suspension will go to ABCC. And they have the authority to remand it, to overrule you and remand it back to you for a different decision. So it's always useful to keep in mind-
Yeah. I, I guess my question is if you're looking to put a condition on the settlement that says one more and we can revoke it, if they decline, if they, their feeling is not to do that, it's really irrelevant because you can do it. If these are just guidelines, you don't need to do the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven strikes.
Jim, is it something that Ginny would be comfortable with? And maybe counsel can tell me if this is something we can set, is that if there was alleged violation, that you would want the liquor license basically suspended to the hearing until the, a public hearing took place? Is that something you're looking for? So let's say, let's say next Saturday, there was a alleged violation. They would turn their liquor license into the town until the public hearing. Is that doable?
No, because that-
I'm asking.
That could be the equivalent of revocation, because if the hearings continued another times, if it's suspended for two months, you're putting them out of business.
But we could, we could do that right now too, Frank. That's what I'm saying. Would that be agreeable in, in something?
But again, it's an alleged violation. So you couldn't take it for an alleged violation.
Expediate the hearing. You expediate the public hearing and you wouldn't posit upon it that that was the case. Maybe, I'm not, I'm questioning Ginny, is that something you're looking for in the agreement?
I just want the, the public and Waxie O'Connellis to feel that this isn't just, we're not just, it's not just lip service. I mean, we are definitely, definitely serious about what happens going forward. I mean, I wasn't on the board the last time around, but it seems to me the biggest problem that Waxie O'Connellis had was its management, Mr. Hyde. And that, it seems, from what I've heard, what I've read, he let a lot of things happen, which were lawful in many ways. He's not in the picture anymore. And it seems like, as Frank said, the culture has changed. And I would like to give them the benefit of the doubt of that, that the culture has changed. And, but I also want assurances from them. And I want the public to be assured that if anything happens again, that's it. The benefit of the doubt is absolutely gone. That's, that's my concern.
Would, would the board agree to the settlement? And am I in line here to be able to discuss this?
Let me just caution the board on one thing. You're discussing this so-called last-chance agreement. We use those in employment law all the time, but the only reason I would caution you against that, number one, no bar owner or counsel is ever going to agree to that because they're putting their head in the noose. They're saying, we agree that our license is gone if there's any kind of a violation, without knowing what kind of a violation it was. And they always want the right to come before you and argue that there's mitigating circumstances which you should consider and not revoke. From your point of view, I would also suggest that you don't want that kind of agreement. And licensing matters because the law presumes that for each and every violation, you're going to give a public hearing, you're going to look at the facts, and you're going to make a decision. So picture this, six months from now, we do another compliance check. Once again, Waxie serves a minor. If there's a last chance in this, theoretically, it's revoked immediately without benefit of a hearing. That goes unappealed to ABCC. And the first thing ABCC is going to say to you, guaranteed, you didn't have a hearing, you didn't consider the facts.
I didn't say that.
You had a last chance agreement? And they're going to remand it right back to you for a hearing, guaranteed.
That's not what I'm suggesting.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm hearing-
I'm suggesting that, all right, I'll use your terminology, Kevin. The head is in the noose right now. That's the way I look at this. Okay? So on, on top of their agreement, now counsel, tell me, should we agree on discussing the settlement agreement now before we proceed with any more discussion? Or should we stop discussion?
If you're, as I noted before, if you're inclined, and it sounds like a majority of the board is, to consider suspension as opposed to revocation, I would advise that you continue to do so in the context of a settlement agreement, because I think that's in the board's interest as well.
So the board needs to make a vote now?
No, you can continue discussing.
Just continue discussion.
One, one thing I would note is that if you take a look, it's on page three of the proposed settlement agreement, paragraph 10, the licensee has already, and our discussions agreed that if the licensee fails to comply with the terms of this agreement, the board may seek additional penalties against the licensee, including further suspension or revocation of the license. So in that fashion, through this agreement, they're already on a tighter leash than other licensees in town. In that, in addition to the normal laws that they have to comply with, and any conditions in the license, they have this additional agreement they have to comply with in terms of training, maintaining the electronic scanner, coming in, giving you periodic reports. A violation of one of those provisions, they're already agreeing that they recognize that might result in further suspension or revocation. So it's, it's, they, we've been using the, the noose analogy. I like the tighter leash. They're already on a tighter leash through this settlement agreement. So you have that leverage beyond what you normally would have.
Okay. Then, then the, the avenue I would care to take on top of the settlement agreement is some kind of restitution in, in a monetary fashion towards the town and a donation towards a beneficiary, beneficial group like Madder Sad. And that way, I think I'd be inclined to go with it. I'm thinking in restitution of probably, and counsel- I'm thinking in restitution of probably, and counsel tell me if I'm out of line because I'm not an attorney, am I out of line?
You're not out of line if it's what the licensee is willing to agree to through a settlement agreement.
Well, I would tend to amend the settlement agreement to $10,000 restitution to the town to help in furthering police training.
In addition to the $10,000 that's in here for the attorney fees and the town?
$10,000 towards training for, for the, to be used in public safety for the future education of the officers and the fire department if they're.
So are you saying an additional $10,000, that was, I didn't hear answer.
Yes.
An additional $10,000 to what's already here?
To the town and a gift fund to the public safety to be used for education of our law enforcement, public safety officials, and $5,000 to a group of their choice, sad or mad.
So you're now saying an additional, so 25,000 altogether?
Well, the attorney fees have nothing.
Is that what you're saying? Like.
Let me help, that first, the first provision is in $10,000.
Up to $10,000.
I understand, it says up to $10,000. I just want to tell you what it's going to.
That's what I said, yeah.
I just want the board to be what it's going to actually end up being. The overtime for our officers is going to be well under $1,000, hugely under a thousand, probably under 500. Council fees will probably be somewhere between $1,000 and $1,500. So that provision, when we give them the bill, is probably in the range of 2,000, maybe a little more, but right around there. So that's not a $10,000 offer to the board. That, the, the offer to the board to cover council fees and our expenses of our offices is probably worth somewhere between 2 and 3,000. It's way less than 10,000, just so you'll know, okay? Also, board should understand, you have no authority to impose fines and fees and things like that. In fact, you're on very thin ice.
I just asked counsel.
Yeah.
And he just gave me an answer Kevin. That's why I directed him to answer the question. And he said, he said to me exactly that I can say anything that they tend to agree with, correct?
You can, since this is a settlement agreement that the licensee will be agreeing to, if through, under the terms of the agreement, they're agreeing to make the gifts that you mentioned.
I stated as a gift.
Gifts, not fines. You would be on, you would be on solid ground. If you're trying to impose fines, it's a different story.
I suggested that they give a gift to the public safety departments, that's what I said Diane, a gift and then.
Donation.
A donation, right. And then, and then also another $5,000 to charity, another charity, a group of their choice if they were inclined to mad or sad. So that's where, that's what I'm leaning towards. I think, James.
And I think the.
Mark is waving his hand, he'd like to talk.
I just want to, you're looking for 15,000.
No, no, the first on, your item four under the draft says you'll pay the legal fees not to exceed 10,000, so that.
Excluding that, what's on top of that, you're looking for.
I'm suggesting that I'd be inclined to see a monetary donation to the community in two different ways, as I stated.
And, and the amount totaling?
10,000 for public safety, $5,000 to mad or sad.
So but a total of 10?
15.
10,000 public safety, 5,000 mad, sad. I'm sorry, who had it here?
Yeah, Mark would like to speak. Do you have to come to the microphone, say?
Not that you're spending our money or anything, no. As Attorney Spillane will, will know, we've disclosed some of the financial difficulties we had to incur and have had to do settlements over a year as a result of prior management. Some of these include that there was a BMI bill that was never paid for three years. We had to settle with BMI their music license for when the bands were playing and all that, they were never paid in Foxborough. We got sued by a company out of Boston, Strong, William Strong, we settled with them. What was the settlement was $24,000. So for Barbas, left us nothing, we said, right, they accepted $2,000 a month for 10 months and we paid him $6,000 upfront. We were probably on payment plans, Paul probably knows better because he's been arranging with them. How many different companies for bills that have been paid?
Fifteen, twenty different companies.
Just in our efforts to stay, to stay in the community. The landlord that hasn't been paid, CAM, going back to, how much? 18 months. Things like this, we just walked into a hole in the middle of the summer. That's after Mr. Hyde had gone, after this incident, it was just like mail unopened behind the safe, pulling it off, registered mail to me from BMI. You know, enforcing the monetary penalty on us just as an individual, let's say, not seen as a group, it'd be, it'd be very hard or whatever because we've, it's, I just want you to take that into consideration. These are things we've disclosed to our attorney, he didn't bring it up, but as part of our effort to stay in this community, we said, we've arranged to make payments and make good on, on everything, including the landlord and everything else, okay?
Thank you. We tried, Mark, to come up with a number of days suspension in order to, you know, show the effect of this violation, but also not put the business underwater. So it's struggling, it's struggled, it has been struggling for the last year, trying to keep above water, especially with the debt that was left over to them. If we knew there was going to be a possibility or if we thought the board wanted us to make some kind of gift like that, we would have thought about it and taken a day or two off of the suspension. But we didn't consider that because we looked at all the things that were going in the settlement agreement, talking to the town manager, town council. We came up with this and thought this was the best offer. You know, and all the prior hearings, you know, none of these gifts other than to cover costs, so it wasn't something we considered. If we did, we might have changed some of these offers at some point.
Well then they can, in my opinion, you can have a certain timeline to take care of that situation of my suggested addition to the settlement agreement. That working in a time fashion would be expedient to tomorrow, expediated to tomorrow, before six months? Does that work? You know, over a certain period of time to take the suggested donations. Doesn't have to be expediently done tomorrow. Take six, eight months, take a year, divide it by a month, so much a month, whatever, if you want to sit down and talk to your client, if the board's inclined, I don't know if the.
Can we talk about that a little bit before you keep going back and forth a little bit? How I feel about it is I'd rather have them take their money that they have and spend it on the training. I'd like to know a little bit more about the scanner that you've got. I know that we were introduced to that scanner, that, the newest scanner that the chief had spoken about. I'm just wondering if you could tell me what kind of new device did you get and if it's, if it's.
Yes, actually, I think it was endorsed by the chief. It's an ID scanner.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're going to either have to come to the table.
Yeah, can you, sorry.
I believe it's actually endorsed by the chief. It's a ID scanner detection. It has 60 security checks. I know one of the things that Mr. Brown had asked was how we used it. It's actually pretty simple, you slide it in, it goes through the expiration, the age, the barcode, microfiber, it's pretty detailed. It does every state, it does military IDs, and it's fairly simple, so it's pretty good.
So you, you went and got the.
We did and we actually just renewed for a six-month policy. We've been using it for about, I think about nine weeks and then we just re-upped.
And, and your employees are comfortable using it and they, they know what they're doing with it?
Everyone is pretty comfortable. I mean, basically the way that we use it is Monday through Wednesday and maybe Sunday if the Patriots aren't playing. Basically, everyone on staff has been tip certified, it's on file. So as far as a standard ID, if it's not a duplicate, if it's not out of state, we just take the ID, we feel pretty confident that the staff is trained in that. If someone comes with an out-of-state ID, we use the machine. Obviously, for Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, we set it up front for the busy nights, but we really don't have a problem now with out-of-state IDs. Before the policy was two forms of backup ID, but it's kind of been eliminated with the machine.
Because this, I mean, this incident didn't happen on the weekend.
No, it happened on a Thursday. I mean, just as, you know, another thing Mr. Brown had said, the, the policies that were in place last time before, I think I, I'm maybe the oldest employee there now and when the hearing went on before, I never saw it, but Gordon did come in and kind of say, this is what we have to do and there was a policy put in place, all the employees had to sign it, but there was really no policing. And when the man in charge is kind of setting the tone for what's going on, it kind of trickles down. But yeah, it was just, we made a mistake is what it comes down to. And where there was a regular there, and he does hang out with a bunch of people, he called someone over, it was a really good employee of ours, the situation, you do something a million times, she saw him, saw him.
Excuse me, sir, you can't get into the merits of the specific incident.
I'm sorry, okay.
Because now you're testifying and you can't.
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. I just wanted to know about the scanner and I just feel that I would rather have them take that money and spend it on, you know, making their improvements that they want to make and getting them, you know, that's just my feeling.
Having them reinvest it into the business is what, rather than paying it out.
Safety, yeah, I'm not saying, you know, go buy a new fry later, I would like, you know, I mean.
I wasn't being facetious, that's what I meant, put it into the safety protocol that is in this rather than paying it out.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. Lorraine, you had your hand up.
I agree with Linda and I think given that our costs are pretty low, you know, pretty well below the $10,000, there's still a significant gift to the town that could be used for public safety training. So, you know, I am comfortable with the $10,000 taking the.
It says up to. So, and Kevin explained there would be like 2,000 to 3,000 is going to be their cost.
But that's what I'm saying, I'm comfortable with $10,000.
Are you saying that you want $10,000, you don't want up to, you want $10,000?
Yes, because I want the balance to go to public safety. I'm, I'm not interested in an additional 10 plus 5, just the first 10.
$10,000. And the rest of the settlement is approved by the board. My client's willing to pay, change that one statement to $10,000 straight up. It'll be a gift to the town.
So the public safety, I think Lorraine said, is always said, Lorraine, public safety.
The balance.
Okay.
So item four would be, would cover the cost of the attorney and the difference would go to public safety. It was just item number four.
We'll change it so $10,000 comes to the town.
Just chairman, if it pleased the board, if it's a reimbursement of legal fees, then it has to go to the general fund. It actually can't credit the account, there's no way the Bureau of Counsel allows that. So if the board's intent is to provide some money for police department training, my suggestion is just make it a gift of whatever amount you want and just have it gifted for police department training and don't try to split off pieces of it because frankly, at the end of the, at the end of the day, it's all the same. But, you know, if it's the intent to provide training to the PD, which is always very, very helpful, then just make it a set amount for police department training and that's easy to administer. Otherwise, you're going to have to have them designate what each piece of it's for as a gift so that it goes to those purposes because they've got a legal right to describe where the gift is going.
Deductible, obviously. So I would suggest, Lorraine, eight and two?
Are you saying to do that, to split it?
If you want a piece to go to the legal fee and you want to say it's 2,000, that's going to go into the general fund. If, and then 8,000 goes to police training, whatever your pleasure is.
2,000 cover legal fees?
It'll be, it'll probably do more frankly. I know the billing rate and the rough amount of time and I'd, you know, you're in the ballpark, I'm pretty sure. I don't want to speak for Brian unfairly, I don't know what he's going to bill. It's just hard for me to believe it would, you know, it would exceed that. It might by a little bit, but, you know, I can't give you the precise, the precise amount sitting here.
I just got to mention the irony of this is we're, we're putting money in a fund to train the police and the police did their job and that's why we're here in the first place, so.
That's why I said I would rather have the money go to training of.
All right, now, David Brown, you had asked a couple of questions, did you get your answers?
Oh yeah, I think.
Okay, anyone else from the public that wanted to? Yes, if you could just come up to the microphone.
Debbie Stewart, 44 in the Ponce at Heights Ave. I was sitting home watching this and I had talked to Jim and I've talked to Linda quite a bit about this. I was one, and I'm not sure if you were here at the last time, but I was one of the passionate, there was another mother very passionate about the last violation. And when I first heard about this violation, I was, that's it, they got to go. What I see tonight happening here is I see you've come in and you pummeled yourself and you've basically put yourself out there to the board and to the town and I applaud the police department for doing their job as Jim just said. So I have to disagree with you, Mark, I don't think that you need to give them money for training. I'm sorry, I think this is becoming very complicated and that's why I got up, threw clothes on and got here. I think Frank has presented it. The last meeting that we sat here, there was not one person on the side of Waxy's apologized for their behavior because the attorney would not allow anyone to do that. So I think you've done a wonderful job presenting. I think you have an awful lot of, if I've got it all right in my head, there are an awful lot of conditions on this over and above a 16-day suspension. And you know how I feel about this, we've talked a lot about this. From my aspect, you've done what you needed to do. You fired Gordon Hyde, which was, he was a huge problem and everybody in this room knows that. You have hired a new manager, you're putting in, you're changing it from a, the perspective of my nephews and my nieces as it's the place to go to party. It's the place to go and drink and overdrink and I had said that the last time I was here. And there were underage drinking going, there was underage drinking going in there before. Now we're catching it. For me, I'm not sitting there and I'm not getting the phone calls, you're getting the phone calls from me, Linda's getting the phone calls from me. But from my perspective of where I was then to where I am now, I see a total difference in the attitude of the owners, the management, the attorney and I'm, for me, Frank's putting himself on the line by representing them because he lives in this town and he, he's going to have to put up with it. And I just think it's getting complicated, it's so convoluted, oh, we're going to take 10,000 and put 10,000 here and 5,000 there. They have the nooses around their neck, not one, there's multiple nooses around their neck. And if I understand correctly what our attorney said, I know you want it written, they're not going to agree to it, the next violation, they're gone, they're not going to agree to that. Nobody that knows anything about the law would agree to that. But you have the ability within the guidelines that Lorraine and the chief have gone through and Dave Brown and that whole committee, that if something happens again, you come back, you have another hearing and then the five of you can say you're gone. That's my perspective. And I wasn't really sure, I was waffling about people not having jobs and losing money and Waxy's, oh, they just don't care, they don't care about the town, they don't care, they just want to make their money. I don't see that happening this time. And maybe that's just me, maybe because I'm not feeling good, I don't know, but I just had to come up because I knew you knew where I stood and I had to come up and give you my opinion and I just, this whole. And I just, this whole money thing, now you've, in five minutes, five minutes, that's how long it took me to get here, you've gone from $10,000 and $5,000 to $8,002. I'm like...
Negotiations.
I just, I think you need to look at it on the merits of what has been given for a settlement. And then it can be written, and I don't know, I'm assuming it can be written, that a next hearing, the probability will be there, that there will be no more chances, as Jenny said. Not necessarily saying that this is going to be it, but there's a probability that that's going to happen. So, I'm going to take five minutes to go back home and hopefully you'll get it straightened out. And I hope to God that, you know, the board goes and gives you another chance. You're welcome.
Thank you, Debbie. Thanks for coming out, and more importantly, thank you for dressing and coming out.
Yeah.
I said, have a good night.
Hit your DVR.
All right. Anyone else from the public?
Can I make a motion to close the public hearing now?
Any more discussion from the board before the motion comes?
No, again, you really can't.
We're talking about...
You can't close the public hearing until you've decided if you're going to settle it or not. Because if you don't settle it, then the public hearing is going to have to continue.
You can reopen it if it comes down to that, too, Kevin.
Maybe we have a straw poll motion to move towards settlement versus revocation. So, I have a motion for that? Were the public hearings still open?
Yeah, I move that we work with the, with the settlement agreement for...
With the terms towards settlement.
Toward settlement.
Motion made, seconded?
Second.
For the discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries four to one.
Now, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
No.
Why? We just, we just...
No, because if we can't settle this, then we have no recourse. We'll have to go into revocation. So...
All right, then I will make a motion. I will make a motion that we accept...
Well, I think we have to have a motion of finding a fact first.
No, because we're not really having a hearing.
No. The finding of fact, which is the admission of guilt, if you will, is in the document. They've already agreed to that.
All I would suggest is you, if you can come to an agreement with the licensee, as your final, as part of your motion to accept the agreement, whatever you come up with, you vote a finding of a violation, because the agreement does stipulate that the board found a violation of serving a person under the age of 21, and that the licensee agrees that the board made that finding and that they will not appeal that finding.
I think we're saying the same thing, because we've done that on every other one.
Yep.
And that's the first step before we can go into any settlement. So, in the past, we've had written ones, but does someone want to make a motion that there has been violations?
I move that we, as a point of fact, that...
And as part of the settlement agreement.
Okay, so you want me to do it all in one motion?
Yes.
Really?
Because you can't reach a finding of fact until you've had a hearing. The only way you're making a finding of fact is pursuant to the settlement agreement. That's a tiny but extremely important distinction.
Maybe we should have counsel draft up so quick, a quick motion. That way, it's no loopholes, and I'm not trying to cut anybody off, but just want, do you want it done?
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Everything we've talked about is in the settlement agreement. I don't know if you want to take five minutes and read it. The only change would be the $10,000, which, if I understand correctly, will limit the legal fees and the reimbursement fees to $2,000, $2,000 gift. And there'd be an $8,000 gift to police, and that'd be all we'd have to add into it. Would you agree with that, Attorney Paul?
I agree. I would suggest that you familiarize yourself with the agreement. Come to terms with the licensee, vote on whether or not you want the agreement as part of that motion. Make the finding as part of the terms of the settlement agreement of a violation.
So, to that end, there are 17 agreement lines or items in here. Do you want to take a minute to look at that, which we just got tonight? So, you've read this? Kevin, the four dates that are in here for the licensee shall appear before the board on March 5th, June 1st, September 1st, and December 1st. Have those been coordinated with our 2013 schedule?
Those days should probably say on or about.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The March 5th, 2013 would be the date where they, the licensee actually would come in to give you an in-person status report. The other dates are for a written status report, not a, not a meeting date.
March 5th?
March 5th would be when they come in person.
It's a Tuesday, yep. It's a Tuesday. Is it, it would fall on our schedule, Jim?
Attorney Spillane, are there any other pending violations that are at the state that we're not aware of?
Pending?
Yeah. We had that issue last time, where there was a parallel path. They were dealing with violations at the state, and we...
I have, I have none from the PD right now.
Okay. You guys read through all 17?
Mr. Chairman, I think Frank's had a discussion with his client. Is there anything he might want to?
The only thing they've requested is that, in the agreement right now, it says such payments shall be made in full in 10 days after the execution of this agreement. What we'd like to do is pay the $2,000 in 10 days and the remaining $8,000 in 30 days.
Would it make more sense, you know, within 30 days of receipt of a bill? We don't know what the bill's going to be or when you're going to get it.
Well, the $2,000, you've kind of put a ceiling on with regard to council's fees. And from town manager's estimate, it's probably going to be a little bit more than that. So, we're not concerned about it being under that. We'll give the $2,000 for that. But the remaining $8,000, just for cash flow purposes, if you give us 30 days for that.
I'm in both of that. No, not a problem with me. I mean, I speak for one of five.
You have a motion?
All right. Make a motion that we accept the updated draft settlement agreement from Attorney Spillane, representing Waxy O'Conna's, and to make the statement of admission, to accept the statement of admission of a violation on said date of...
September 27.
September 27, 2012.
Motion made, seconded?
Second.
Motion made by Mark Spillane, further discussion? Under further discussion, obviously, I was adamantly opposed about a settlement agreement. That ship has sailed, so it looks like we're going in that direction. I would support this, I guess, in solidarity with the board. And I request, or actually, I hope that this business is successful and can kind of turn its way, and commend Attorney Spillane for jumping in. And I think you are putting your neck out on this one, that you realize it, because you're very tied to the town, and this is something that, I mean, I have a lot of respect with the work that you're doing, and I hope this is successful, so I will support this.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, since it seems it's kind of settled. I told the story to Kevin. When they first approached me, I politely declined, taking them on, and explained to them because of the situation that they had before. Mark came back and asked me to take it on. He said he didn't want to appeal to the BCC. He would take whatever kind of suspension would be coming forward. I explained to him, you know, it could be a revocation. And he said he understood that, but he wanted to do everything that he could do for the town, so that wouldn't happen. And that's why I had him meet with a number of town employees. And with Kevin and other people, I asked them, before we met with them, I asked them to be brutally honest with Mark and Paul and Joe about what happened before, so that they really got that clear. And I think it took a number of meetings until they really got it through, that they really understood it. And I believe they're very committed to turning that around. So, I think this is a very good start. There are requirements for them to come back here on March 5th to talk to you, to send the status reports. I explained to them they should keep close contact with Chief O'Leary, so they keep ahead of it and not reacting to it. So, I'd like to thank you for that, and I think they do hear it. And I think it was because of town employees that they've really heard it and understand it.
Very good. Well said.
And the most important thing was I made sure everyone told them how bad the food used to be.
On that note, a motion was made, seconded. Any further discussion? Anyone from the audience before we vote on this? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you all. Best of luck.
Motion to close.
Thank you to the Foxborough Police and your staff.
Yeah, you need to close the public.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made to close it, seconded, I mean, Mark, seconded by Linda. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask special counsel to make the amendments to those sections, because I think it's better to have a clean document. If you could do that, Brian, make the amendments, pass it by Frank, shoot it to me. I'll get the board to sign two originals, get them over to your office for two, and then one will come back here.
Can I get Mark to sign it before he goes away? I'll get him to sign them all. What do you want you to assign?
No, no, tomorrow's fine. If you want to bring two over here that are signed, then we'll have the board sign them next week or when you're around, and then we'll shoot one back over to your office.
Frank, can we take a two-minute break? Two-minute recess, and we'll convene for the next item. Thank you, Frank.
Yeah.
All right, we're back. We are a little bit behind, an hour and 15 minutes. And we have, we'll start with the town asset review update. And selectman Lorraine Brew will present that.
Okay, thanks, Jim. I just wanted to start by thanking everyone who has been participating in this project. Bill Caspero, Randy Scolons, Kevin Weinfeld, Gary Whitehouse, Bill Yukna. And we had a lot of assistance from Lisa Sinkus when it came to the deed research on this project. Okay, the Town Asset Review Committee was appointed by the Board of Selectmen to look at ways to potentially monetize our assets that currently aren't generating any tax revenues. In our meeting, when we first started looking at this project, we were looking both at the sale of assets from the standpoint that we could get funds that could be used for defraying costs of any future capital projects, such as, you know, we've been talking about the schools, the town hall renovation, all those major capital projects that are coming up. So, we knew that these assets could potentially generate additional tax revenues. So, in addition to getting the funds from the sale of the assets, the ongoing tax revenues going forward from the development of some of these assets could, in the long run, improve our revenue stream. Ultimately, town meeting approval of expenditures is required, so any funds that would be obtained by selling these assets in order for them to be spent would need to have town meeting approval. What we worked on was first coming up with a process of refreshing all of the data that had been compiled previously. There was a committee in place called the Land Review Committee. Mark served on it, I think, for a period of time. And they had come forward with a very large list of properties to be looked at. And they included properties that were controlled by water and sewer, by conservation. And so, we first, we had to figure out how we were going to do this. So, we decided to use the Munis, the vision system from the assessor's office to identify the list of actionable properties. There were about 280 of them, covering 2,600 acres. And during that review, we actually found that there were 30 parcels that were not listed or not found on an assessor's map. So, we found these parcels that were not identified and have given that information to the assessor's office to research and correct.
These are town parcels, town-owned?
Yes.
Okay.
So, as we went through these lists, we also removed any of the open space residential development. Is that the correct term? The OSRD parcels, any controlled by the schools, water and conservation, they were removed from the list. In addition, we looked at tax lien properties. These were reviewed and photographed. Gary Whitehouse and Randy Scolons went out and photographed all of the properties that fell into this category to catalog them. We have a packet there on the table that shows photographs and matches them to the map. And these properties included 11 non-residential parcels. There were 13 parcels that were considered land of low value. There were two buildable lots identified. Eight fell into the category of foreclosure, tax possession. And 27 were actually residential properties that fell into this category for a total of 61 properties that we reviewed. Now, the tax title properties have liens that are perfected at the Registry of Deeds. 19 of those had actually had foreclosure initiated upon them. And when that happened, that resulted in approximately $400,000 in tax payments as a result of taking that first step. So, that was very positive. We talked about the tax title possession list at that time and tried to narrow it down. Eventually, we ended up looking at what are the low-hanging fruit that we can pick off of these lists to look at for possible sale. We did get approval from the Board of Selectmen to fund the deed research and also perform an appraisal of the fire station, which I also have on the desk there. And the deed research was performed by James Capola, who's the town tax title attorney. So, this is our short list of recommended properties to consider for sale. The fire station, which was appraised without sewer, the value appraised was $470,000. We also recommend 21 Market Street, which is the former funeral home. Garrett Spillane Road was brought forward as a request, private request. Also, Pine Acres Road, which is a landlocked parcel, was also requested for us to take a look at. And we wanted to discuss again Camp Lincoln Hill, the Oak Street, five Formay lots there. Total estimated value of these properties, based on the appraisal from a couple of years ago, is approximately $1.68 million. Another property that we have discussed in our meetings is the auditorium located over on Pace and Road on the old state hospital property. It was determined that all properties can be sold by auction. Fire station, Garrett Spillane Road, Mark... Fire station, Garrett Spillane Road, Market Street, Pine Acres Road, really a question is, are the five Form A lots on Oak Street? The sale of those lots is supported by Water and Sewer Commissioners and the Planning Board. The Planning Board, I spoke with them, spoke with Kevin Weinfeld. They had taken a vote in the past to support this, and I've asked that I come before them to talk to them again about it for a more current vote on that. Conservation Commission opposes the sale. Ultimately, town meeting approval to sell the Oak Street lots is required. There was a vote taken back in 1974 regarding these Oak Street properties. The town voted to purchase them for recreation and conservation use and did not place them under Chapter 40, but, so that's really a question, I think, in terms of research related to that vote. Kevin is speaking with our town council on that question right now. I went out and walked the property with Gary Whitehouse and Bill Kispara last week. I did speak with Bob Bodie last week, and their group had walked that same property. They actually found a threatened species on the property last weekend, which was very exciting. It's a white marbled salamander, is that correct?
Marble salamander.
Marble salamander. We walked down to the wetlands. If I gave you a couple of maps, if you want to take a look at the last map in your handout, it shows the layout of those five lots. And you can see off the back of the property, there are some oval shapes down the depressions. Those are all wetlands back there, and the salamanders were walking around, I guess, swimming around in there at this time. So that is certain, being that it's indeed a threatened species, that is certainly something that would have to be taken into consideration by whatever development did go on in that The auditorium on Pace and Road, we also discussed. We would have to go for special legislation to request approval to sell this property. And again, within our group, the discussion was such that we thought there would be definite interest by developer for that property, so we did want to pursue that. Next slide. The process for sale of these properties would involve auction. The Board of Selectmen in the past had appointed Lisa Sinkus as the auction officer. Both Lisa and Randy Scolons reviewed a number of auctioneer proposals, provided that information to our group, and we voted five zero to support the Zicos Group as the auctioneer group. They have more than 20 years of experience in this field, and they've auctioned properties for a number of towns, Norton, Billrica, Salisbury, Sandwich, and Westboro. Part of the proposal involves a buyer's premium. That premium covers all of the town's costs related to this auction, but is paid by the buyer, so there is no cost impact to the town. And that's a certain percentage that's negotiated on top of the sale price of the asset. The Zicos Group will also develop the marketing plan. They would notify our butters and ensure that all legal requirements are met so that we can have a good auction of these properties. So the next steps really are to work with the group to update the tax lien property list, take a look at that again, see where we are now. We're a couple of years later since we've compiled that list. Revisit and update the possible foreclosure list to see if there are any properties out there that now fall into this category. Funding for a Tier Two study of Market Street property, we want to look at that since it was a funeral home, to make sure that there haven't been any problems with hazardous waste. Before, we would put that up for auction so that buyers would know what they were getting into. And then we would need to develop warrant articles for special legislation for the auditorium sale, and ultimately, Oak Street properties is our hope. And that's it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions from the board?
Did we already get funding for the, for the Market Street property, like the twin? We already proved that, didn't we?
It's special.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Mark?
Just, it would be interesting, probably just for me, and I don't know if your, your group has this information or not, but the auditorium, Jenny, you probably can find more stuff at home, Mike. I'm telling you, because I was heavily involved with the J.C.'s way back when, and Michael fought really hard for us to get that, that building. So I know that it is deemed to be only used for the same type of venue that it was in the past, which was for recreation and nonprofits. So I'd like to see.
That was through the legislation?
Yes. So that's why we take legislation to, to change that. So if there is a document someplace, if we can cough that up or something, I'd be interested in that, as well as just being a J.C. and all of the history that goes on with the Oak Street properties. I know it's under the Recreation Board right now, but, you know, again, it has history. And the fire station itself, I didn't know if you folks had reached out to the...
Planning Board?
No, the, yes, thanks, Historical Committee on that.
Actually, no, we didn't on the fire station. I did go before the Planning Board and talked about, you know, wanted to get some ideas that they had in terms of uses for that. And we talked about the whole master plan process and waiting to see how that evolved and when the time came for auction of that property, to take into consideration what came out of the master plan, what the desires were to see in that location, basically. But I can run that by the Historical Commission also.
Yeah, I don't know, there was rumbling around there.
I remember the Historic Commission talking about it because, I forget the gentleman's name, he may have left, but he said his father had worked on the fire station plans or his grandfather had. I don't think it was on a register in having significance that, but certainly they, anything around the comment, they'd be input. But I think they've bitten the apple a little bit on this, and it was a while ago.
Okay.
Anyone else? Mark?
With this proposed auction, would it be something we would sell, get the 21E update from Market Street? I'm sure that the Historical is going to put stipulations when it comes to renovating whoever buys or setting some standards on what would happen to the fire station. They kind of always do when it comes to things like this in any town. Would it be advisable to put those two pieces of property as soon as possible up for auction? And then somehow use some of that earmac, some of that money to investigate other situations?
Planning Board is focusing its master plan on the downtown area. That's their single highest priority. And I think, as Lorraine indicated, I think everybody feels that the right action is to wait till the master plan is done, which should be later this spring, early summer. See what they recommend for the fire station and our whole area, and then be sure that whatever sale we do is consistent with those goals. Because that plan represents, you know, what the community wants. They've done a lot of outreach.
Well, let's say that we go through that process, and it goes to, we do decide to go to auction, say, early fall, on those two properties, you still got, because you wouldn't want to hold those two properties up, is my point. Because the auditorium is going to take about a year or so, if you could get the special legislation and then town meeting vote.
Longer.
Absolutely.
Longer than that.
Yeah, it could take three, whatever. So why hold up the sales for that, is what I'm saying. Is the auctioneer appeased to doing that? Is he going to do it all in one lump sum?
He preferred to have as many properties as possible, obviously, in one auction, but we had always talked about the recreation building as a separate issue because of the legislation required.
Well, there might be some concerns with, obviously, Oak Street, too. I wouldn't want that to hold us up for the rest of our lives either. So, and this is going on eight years.
I know, I know.
You know, I mean, this is, we're here and we're left.
I'm hoping, having had conversations with the Conservation Commission lately and a lot of conversations with the Conservation Agent and with the chairman, and having read about a half an inch of stuff that was given to me this weekend on marble salamanders, what I'm hoping is that there's a compromise in there that we can arrive at fairly soon, which allows some part of that property sale to go forward, and everybody basically, you know, gives a little and we do what's good for the town. So I'm hoping there's a compromise in there. I frankly would hate to see it come down to a warrant article at town meeting, because then somebody's going to lose and somebody's going to win, and I don't know who that is. But it just strikes me, that's not the right way for town government to work. You know, we should all work together, see if we can come up with a compromise. I think it's in there.
So we're not voting on anything tonight? She's just, Lorraine's just giving us our update and...
I have one more thing. The lot at the end of Garrett Spillane Road, which I toured with Bob Bodie in the area behind that more than once, is there a way you can put a covenant on that lot that it can't be used for future access to the, if sold at auction to the property behind it, which would open up for a large amount of development if that was possible? Because that's the key way to get into 20 acres or so that could, you know, otherwise is landlocked at this point. And I wouldn't, if it's going to be detrimental to the town to have some, another huge development in that area, would it, I mean, can you put some kind of covenant on it before selling it as a lot, not to exceed going into the backfield, let's say?
You can put whatever conditions on it you want. You can, I've done sales that had 30 conditions on the piece of property. Of course, the more conditions, the more you reduce the value.
Right. It's still a Form A lot right now, it's got value.
If the consensus with the boards that's looking at this, you know, we want to hear from the Planning Board on that, for instance. If the consensus was that the sale was going to create that and we didn't want that to happen, very easy to put a deed restriction on it before the sale, very easy.
And I think what it's, in the evaluation, it's 150,000, so that's more in line with a Form A than a piece that's going to open up to other stuff.
Right.
Anything else?
Nope.
There were wetlands back there, too, in the, that lot behind Garrett Spillane Road that you're talking about?
Well, it's some of, wetlands can be, is more percentage of vegetation than it is actually water. So I've walked it, it don't look that wet to me.
There's a vernal pool back there, somewhere.
Just, just come up to the table or the microphone? Or that one right there.
Hi, Bill Gridditch, happy to walk in by.
We're getting a lot of that tonight.
Yeah, yeah. Two things. One, just a point of clarification on the auditorium. We, the Planning Board, met with REC because there was a stipulation in the land when it came over from the state on that whole project, that two, the two parcels that the town inherited, one was the auditorium, one was the laundry building, they had a stipulation to be used for recreational-type purposes. We had a discussion with the Board of REC about the cost of rehabilitating those two buildings. It's an extensive amount of money, and given our track record as a town taking care of our existing buildings, we thought the likelihood of us being able to do that, we talked with them about the need for them to, quote, "sign off" on that. They have, in fact, sent a letter to a previous Board of Selectmen saying that they weren't interested in that and that the town needed to take control of that and do with it as it may. I'm sure you can get that back. If you can't find that document, I'm sure they will be happy to resubmit it. The laundry building is a different animal. There's a lot of stuff there. It is, there's only two folks that will have interest in that, the town or the director butters, because it's landlocked. So we haven't really, as a group, talked about that. The piece of property on Garrett Spillane Road, a bit of history with that Garrett Spillane Road, that development was initially done when the zoning enforcement officer looked at that as an extension of Camp Road or an old antique cart path. The houses that went in there did not go under site plan review. That is a private road. Great steps are going to have to be taken for that to become a publicly-accepted road, and it causes issue with properties behind that. That antique path actually does go all the way through to Beach Street. The zoning enforcement officer has looked at that area since that project started, and the determination was made by him, which you would have to obviously get verified. But we were told that for future development to go down there, it would have to go through site plan review, which means bringing that road to standards and making it accessible by the properties behind it. So that particular property is going to be very tricky for the town manager and group to tiptoe through because of the history of that project. And I'll keep walking by. Thanks.
Since you're up there, on the parcel, the landlocked between Cranberry, Pine, and Cross Street, looks like there's about an 11 butters that all, it's the triangle that's behind everybody. One option is, it doesn't look, you don't have frontage, it's not a buildable lot, assuming that there's no wetlands. One option would be put it out to the highest bidder. Is there another option? Has anyone talked to those butters that say, "All 12 of you, if everyone wants to chip in, five grand, enlarge your backyards"?
The Planning Board didn't get involved in that parcel at all.
At all?
No. We got involved in the Garrett Spillane one, we got involved in the Lincoln Hill project way back, and we voted at that time, this is probably 2001 or so, we thought it was a good idea to lob off the Form As, providing whatever protection would be needed to protect the wells and stuff at that time. We did not support a full-fledged development at that time, nor do we now.
Okay, on a different parcel, but on this, so we have a parcel we're looking at to auction off, the Pine Acres, Cranberry, and Cross, and the Plan Board hasn't looked at that?
Because a resident came full and expressed interest to buy it.
Okay.
And a butter.
And a butter, okay. And if they did that, it would still have to go to auction?
Yeah, has to go to auction or RFP, but you can't sell it any other way.
Okay.
That actually came before the board, I don't know if you remember, but that individual came in here one night and chatted with you about it, and we explained it was being looked out by the committee.
Are you confusing it with the Bill Buckley Senior property that was behind his house?
Yes, I am.
That's the one?
Thank you.
That was my next question. Did that parcel come up for review? Because that was something that...
That's the Garrett Spillane parcel.
Oh, Garrett Spillane, okay. But not, talking about the Cranberry.
Good, thanks, okay.
Okay. The other one, I know it has a lot of history, but the fire station and the Roberts behind it, I looked at it briefly, but it's Keating, sorry, Keating, sorry. $470,000 is good for a year, I mean, that value, but it has no sewer.
That was with no sewer?
With no sewer, so, whatever the capacity was on the Title V, but a year from now, if there's sewer, obviously, that 470 is going to go up.
Right.
The timing of all this, and I just hate for it to be auctioned off, and then tomorrow the price doubles. What consideration is that in that schedule and the next steps?
To develop timing for the auction, I think we'd have to get through, do, we have to bring this before, before town meeting?
It's already, it's already been approved before town meeting.
That one has?
The master plan.
That one.
Okay, so it's really more related to that.
I think the master plan is the, we've all kind of agreed, we really should see that done, and then have dialogue with the Planning Board about, you know, what do people in the community want with respect to those properties? Because the sale can guide, can, you know, you can structure the sale so tightly that you can produce exactly what you want from a buyer on that property. Or you can just sell it, and then it's catch as catch can. And there's also the sewer issue, which, you know, as the boards are aware, we're making great progress on, and I would say as early as July, potentially. making great progress on, and I would say as early as July, potentially, we could offer sewer on those properties, which greatly enhance their value.
Yes.
So, a lot of things have to come together. I don't see where any auction is imminent in the next three or four months, because he wants a good chunk of property so we can attract a really big crowd, because that gets a lot of excitement and a lot of bidding for the town. And I don't see enough property coming together in the next three or four months that we're gonna be able to move on that, so I think we'll...
I think waiting for the water, waiting, hopefully, for the spring meeting and the master plan is the key.
I think this tonight was to give you an interim report, not for any decisions to be made.
That's all good. One last question on the Oak Hill, and I know this, the Conservation Commission is looking at it, and aside from the salamander, if you take the five Form A and give access, was there, is there still access to the back even with these five lots?
We had discussed there would be an easement.
Through one of the lots?
Through, yeah, and I think it was Lot 1.
And then with the 15 acres in the back would be a buffer and open space?
Yes.
And aside from the...
And then the back eight acres are water and sewer.
Water and sewer. Now, what I had read on the history of this, in the early 70s, '74 it was voted and it was recommended by the recreation and the conservation, that would be open space and even, I think Ben Igo had his hands in this.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Through a clerical error, it doesn't show up on the deed as open space, even though the town voted it. So, you know, I envision this, the Conservation Commission and REC is gonna look at it and give their two cents. If it moves forward, the bigger picture, when a town meeting voted something for open space, even though it was a clerical error and that there's no i's on the, dots on the i's and t's, for one voter to say, "I'm buying this for open space" and then to change it without going back to the voters or correcting that, what's the big plan?
You gotta go back to town meeting anyways. You have to go back to town meeting for one of two things. Either to properly put it under conservation and/or recreation protection under the statute, and it's a very specific way that has to be done, which is why it wasn't recorded, because it wasn't done properly.
Yeah.
Or you have to go back to town meeting for permission to sell it. What I think is going to happen, and what I'm very hopeful, is that we're gonna work some compromises out here, so some very important natural assets, i.e. the marble salamander habitat, could be preserved. And while maybe we don't get to sell five lots, maybe we sell a subset of it. You know, I do think there's some compromising that needs to happen here for the good of the community.
And that dialogue's going back and forth.
Right, and at the end of the day, you know, nobody's gonna win if only one party wins. It's just not, it's not gonna work, because then I think you're gonna have a confrontation at town meeting, and I don't know who wins that. But either way, it's gotta go back to a town meeting, which means it's gotta come to this board, it's gotta come to AdCom, so.
Okay.
I think Jim too, Felix and Jane had provided me with some minutes from back in 1974, and there actually is a sentence here that Mr. Fox outlined the history of the property since offered for sale, he was a selectman at the time, and said, "The town will want full use of the property after a few years." This was being discussed in context of the JC, the State JC Group running the camp buildings that are at the front. So, I think, I would interpret that to mean, because this is how I would want to interpret, I would interpret that to mean that, you know, the intent was to have it for recreation and/or conservation purposes is why it was purchased, but not to be managed. Under Chapter 40, it was never stated that way. It was, "We're gonna buy this so that we can use it, we're using it for recreation for now, we want it back at some point." That's how I interpret these minutes from 74.
That's not how I would interpret that.
I respect that.
Yeah.
But I also, I read all the documents, I read the letters, even, you know, the minutes and all that, and basically it said, "Open space is diminishing, people are developing, we want to protect it." It was $70,000 and it was more for open space, passive recreation. You know, there are buildings out there, but if I was back in the 70s, I didn't raise my hand to vote to put five houses. Not to say it's a bad thing if we can come up with a compromise and look at the...
Well, they talked about it in the minutes, that doing the five, doing, yeah. They talked about the development, but said that would hurt the ability to do the recreation piece for the camp, so that's why they...
Oh, I know, and I think that's, they went through that exercise and said, "We would rather have it open." I mean, this is a dialogue that probably doesn't belong on this table. I think the big picture is, you need to work with the bigger picture of someone votes for something and don't get by it with a clerical issue, you know, 40 years later.
Oh, no, no, that's not at all the intent, that's not at all the intent.
And this is public, anyone from the public come for this? Sure, if you'd just come to the microphone and introduce yourself.
I'm Judy Johnson, I'm on the Conservation Commission. I just wanted to comment on the, you know, the finding of the marbled salamander. This is a threatened species in the state of Massachusetts and it is protected under the Endangered Species Act, Massachusetts Endangered Species Act. So, with that comes a permitting requirement through the state for any type of activity within 500 to 1,000 meters of this vernal pool. That goes way over Oak Street onto the other side, and it also would require to do anything there, you'd have to do a pretty extensive study with experts to determine how the salamanders are moving around in the uplands. These salamanders use the vernal pool for breeding, but they live in the uplands. And so, you'd have to determine how the salamanders are moving into the pool, how critical these, these terrestrial habitats are around the pool, and these studies can take years, a couple, couple of years. And that's a requirement under the, under the state, the Endangered Species Act. So, I just wanted to caution you that it's not, it's not just the Conservation Commission. There are other laws that are involved here, aside from the Wetland Protection Act. Also, you know, the Conservation Commission is opposed to this.
Are you speaking, not to cut you off, but did the Conservation Commission vote on this?
Yes, yes.
You voted on this proposal?
They voted on, yes, they took a vote at a, at a meeting and it was a majority of the board that were opposed to the sale of the Oak Street property, did not feel it was excess to, surplus to our needs. The, there is an Article 97 which protects open space, and seeing that this property was purchased for the purpose of open space and recreation, we feel as though the Article 90, it should, Article 97 should apply to this property. As such, you would have to go through a process that involves a majority vote from the commission, two-thirds vote of town meeting to sell the land, a special act of the state legislation to be able to access the property. And there's also a no-net-loss policy. So, it would have to be, have some other land to swap of equal value. So, I just thought I'd bring those points up.
And those issues are all being researched as we speak, and I, so, I don't want to be contradictory, but I think Judy has a perspective on it, which, from a factual legal point of view, may or may not be correct. We're still researching that. Article 97 protection is not yet the case because there was a, there was an absolute flaw in the vote. Moreover, you cannot...
In the vote or the recording?
Well, you cannot, you, there's no way legally that you can take a piece of land in Massachusetts and put it under conservation protection, if you will, and conduct active recreation on the same parcel of land. You have to subdivide it and you have to indicate which is which. In this case, what appeared happened is that there was a vote to conduct recreation and conservation purposes, neither statute was stated, no subdivision plan was shown. So, what you really have is a, is a, likely a fatally flawed vote in terms of what was the intent of the voters. Was it, one possible explanation, I've read all the documents, newspaper reports, et cetera, was that, and talked to a number of people from recollection, one possible explanation is that the backland was to be conservation and the frontland was to be recreation, i.e. the camp was to be rehabbed and run. And it appears that's what the intent was. Before they ever got to the point where the camp funds were requested to rehab the camp, which would have been very minimal in those days, a lengthy period of time passed, for reasons I can't find, the camp was not rehabilitated. Recreation went on to have greater interest in the property near the, near the state park and, and opened up, you know, a fairly extensive program there, the pool and then the property of above the school, and never exercised any, any real plans over on Oak Street. Most of that fell into disrepair, a lot of the buildings were razed a number of years ago, the two that are left are condemned, so you can't even rehab the buildings anymore. So, what are we left with? A very, very unclear picture in terms of what the voters wanted, a legally fatally flawed vote, which is why I say, and I've requested a legal opinion, so we'll have that soon, I've given Town Council all the background information, including everything from Conservation Commission, and soon we'll have a legal opinion and I think it'll give us a little clarity. But irrespective of what everyone hopes or thinks, it, one thing is abundantly clear. It's gotta go back to a town meeting for a vote, if the intent is to put it under conservation protection, if the intent is to allow some part of it to be used, that also has to be voted by Concom, which is why I continue to say, I suspect there's a compromise in here. I don't quite yet see it, but I think there is, because I don't want to have the risk that people representing what they'd like to see happen, you know, try to do something definitive and other interests aren't accommodated, that would be a shame.
Okay, so it sounds like this, out of the 2.7 million, this is almost half of it, so there's a lot of work to be done.
There is. In the listing on the, of the, of the state-listed species, marble salamanders is a huge event because, you know, there's only 75 towns in the state that have registered vernal pools with that species present, so that's a fairly big deal.
Well, I'm of the mindset that it's killed a number of my projects, and Mark just told me, "They taste like chicken," so one or the other.
Well, I will say this.
There's quite a range of what's gonna happen.
I will say this, it is not the case that the state has automatic jurisdiction over 500 or 1,000-foot buffer. Under the statute, there is indeed factually only 100 feet of jurisdiction.
We're getting really deep in this.
Plus, okay, fine, well, I'll end it there, I'll end it there.
Let's move on. This is definitely gonna be a debate for the future, as we have in your office.
Any, any other public comment on the properties? Lorraine and Randy, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, seeing that we have so many interested parties out here, wanna appease some so they can move on to their families?
Chief, do you mind sitting a little bit? Because I know one person has a babysitter and, you wanna go right, let's just talk really briefly about the gaming proposal, and, because I see Chris and, what's your name? Tracy.
Roger said it'd be quick.
Yeah, this is gonna be quick. All right, I put this, basically, the item of formation of a gaming proposal, obviously there's, the January 5th deadline came and there were 11 companies that submitted proposals. Up until today, I thought two were for slots, there was actually three companies that are looking, four?
Three.
Yeah, three companies. Plainville, Taunton, and then a third company down at Liberty Tree Mall, so they're looking to retrofit a mall and expand it for slots. There's legislation specific to if a development is going into a town next to you or a town that's gonna impact you, what the ramifications, the mitigation and all those, and this isn't just a, this isn't a money grab saying, "Somebody's gonna do it if they do it in Plainville, what do we get?" I think we need to look at what the development is and look at the mitigation. When I think impacts, you know, one or two or three or five years, but also 10, 20, 30 years, because this, whatever's gonna go in if it ends up in Plainville, may expand, it may bring businesses away from Foxborough, traffic impact and all that stuff. So, at the very least, the first step, I wanted the Gaming Commission to come in front of our board to explain the regulations, explain what an abutting impacted community is and what our rights are. So, I've got a John Ziamba from the Mass Gaming Commission committed to February 26th at 7:30. He's gonna come in and explain the Gaming Commission and, and hopefully we can get a relationship going with what we need to do next. And I would suggest and put a committee together, and it wasn't my intent to form it tonight until we know what the scope and the commitment and the jurisdiction is, but think about who would be on that committee. I know Tracy and Chris expressed some interest, I don't know if any, any other people, but as, expressed it to you guys, but on, you know, have the Gaming Commission come in on the 26th and then we'll do a follow-up and put a group together that would pull the reports from Plainville, pull the reports from consultants from North Attleboro and what have you, and then we would hire our own consultants to look at that and see what our impact may be, that, things that we haven't thought about, and then be in a better position to say, if and when it goes forward, we're in the equation, and if and when it goes forward, they're required to deal with us. If not at the table, then with the Gaming Commission separately. So, that's what I wanted to bring up tonight.
Jim, if I could add to that, maybe that, some people have expressed interest in me in being on the committee. I mean, I've told them to come to the Selectmen's Office and fill out a committee form. So, maybe tonight's the night to say, "If you're interested, go to the Board of Selectmen's Office, fill out a committee form." I guess we call it Plainridge Slots Committee, whatever you wanna call it, Review Committee, Plainridge Slot Review Committee on Impact, whatever you wanna name it, have them, whoever wants to come forward, have them come forward, fill it out, so that when we do have the 20th, meeting on the 27th, or the...
27th.
27th.
Sorry, February 26th.
February 26th, that's the deadline to try and get on the committee and then we can have the people come forward in the next meeting and do the interviews and have a committee formed, instead of, you know, prolonging it.
Yeah. I agree with all that, other than I wouldn't put the deadline as a 26th. I think people need to hear what it's all about and see if they're interested. And then, you know, this is a long, this isn't gonna be done in a month.
No, it's a longer commitment.
Maybe a couple meetings after that finalize it.
Okay. So, but anybody that has expressed interest should come to the board, Selectmen's Office, and fill out a committee form.
Just a question for the board, because some folks are calling us and we didn't know what to do. Would it make sense to the board, very often when you're establishing a new committee, I haven't been here with you since we've had a new one, but what other boards have worked for, will actually write down what it is that the board wants the committee to do, i.e. known as a charge? Rather than appoint a committee and then sort of set them loose and goodness knows what's gonna end up happening. So, it's just a way for the board to be a little more focused. My question for the board is, if you are interested in doing that, wouldn't you want the charge to be in place before you started asking for volunteers? Because right now the volunteers don't know what it is they're gonna do.
I think they'd get a good idea. Let's, let's, they're all out there, they're eager to try, sign up, let them sign up and then we'll have the power, you know, and then we'll, then we'll give them some direction. And that's my opinion, anybody could...
Well, after we speak to the Gambling Commission, we may have a better idea of what they're expecting and then we may, it may be beneficial to maybe seek someone in the community that maybe not a volunteer, you know, but maybe after hearing what the Gambling Commission is saying, we may say, "You know what, I think such and such a person with his business background or his some kind of background might be a good addition. Why don't, can we ask him to..."
Well, I think Jim covered that when he said, "Don't close it out until..."
Right, so I, yeah, I think I'd like to hear what the Gambling Commission has to say, explaining the, and then, and then drop a charge, you know.
But in the meantime, I mean, if people are interested, we'll have them fill out a form and we'll keep them and why not?
Yep, okay.
Okay.
I know a couple people, Chris and Tracy, did you wanna ask, or, I know you've been sitting here for a couple hours now, so, is, sure.
You know, a lot of people, Chris Mitchell, 9th Street, a lot of people think that because Plainridge is down there where, you know, a good hunk of us live, that it's just gonna affect us, but it will affect the entire town. I was thinking of it driving up here, you know, okay, how's it gonna affect somebody on Beach Street? I was thinking of it driving up here, you know, okay, how's it gonna affect somebody on Beach Street? Well, just like in the morning, when we leave Spruce Street to come up here, if it's 7:15 or so, you're gonna hit traffic from the high school. So you take the backroads, you know, you whip through the country roads, and that's kinda where Spruce Street is. But it's gonna happen, if somebody's going down Route 1, and there's something at the stadium, then they might cut down Beach Street to go through the center of town. So with this whole thing, if it goes in at Plainridge, will affect the entire town. So putting a committee together, I think it would be good to have people from all sections of the town on the committee. Because, you know, like I said, people always will find a shortcut to anyplace they go. Another thing is find out how far down the road from the Gaming Commission we can, you know...
Study.
Study, yeah. And, you know, a few questions, are they gonna cover the town's costs for any of the surveys, traffic studies, any of that?
No, right on point. And I look, I mean, your first inclination is traffic. So, you know, study what the level of service A is on a backroad, and if it changes, you know, then...
Because there, Plainridge now is saying, nobody's gonna use Spruce Street to go to that, which that's totally untrue.
And at the end of the day, it is gonna be one slot house in the entire state. So their study is saying they're gonna be pulling business from everywhere, and if they're starting to pull businesses from Patriot Place, you know, that they're gonna go there instead, that I think is a valid impact.
Another thing to look at, say Plainridge does get it, who knows who's gonna get it? What happens five, six, seven years down the road, if they're doing incredibly well? Gambling commissions, everything's going good, hey, Plainridge, why don't you open up a full-blown casino?
No, it's, no, because the license...
We just, we're talking about a piece of land that was recreation 30 years ago, and now we're gonna sell it for house lots. Anything can change.
Yeah, but the, first of all, they, there's only one casino per region.
Right now.
So we're, well, yeah, but the legislation says you're, they're guaranteed the license for 15, you know, for 15 years. But also, but, yeah, but, yeah, no, I know, I know. But also, when you say there's, there's one, you know, casino for each region, well, you can't, you, if the slot machine is, the slot piler is gonna go into one of those regions, so they wouldn't have, like, two casinos in that region. The legislation wasn't written that way.
Right now, I mean, but things could change.
You know Chris what I say, you know, it's easier to amend a bill than to pass a bill.
I'm looking at protecting the town's best interest all around, and, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily say it.
And you shouldn't. No, truly.
There's just some food for thought there.
I appreciate that. So stay in touch, and if you're around on the 26th, that would be great. Tracy, did you wanna?
No, I think it's too preliminary for me to...
Okay, great, thanks. Circle back to Chief Hatfield, do you wanna fire department fees?
Good evening to all of you. I hope I didn't scare any of you guys with the big package of data that I gave you. But one of the things that we had found is it's been about five years, maybe a little over five years, since the Fire Department even looked at their fee structures and started to determine where we sit when looking at the area and looking at the region and so on. So in the whole process of starting to look at our numbers, I reached out to Norfolk County Fire Chiefs to say, what's everybody doing for permit fees? And it was, we're not the only community that hasn't updated our fees in a while. So I ended up getting tasked by Norfolk County Chiefs to also do an analysis for all the Fire Chiefs. So that, right now, I've got about 70% of the data in, and I'm not looking for you folks to, you know, make a vote or anything like that. I got all this data. I feel it's important for us to look at our fees. I think it would be very important for me to hear from the Selectmen, hear from the AdCom, to give the Town Manager and myself some of their insight. And that's why in my cover letter to the Town Manager, I had suggested getting a small committee together to look at this data. Kinda look at where we sit in regards to the average. That's one of the reports that I showed you. And then there was one, I gave you some recommendations after Deputy Chief Bagley and I started just kinda looking at it a little bit. Some of the areas that other towns are really pretty consistent, I made some ideas and recommendations. But again, it's all in draft, as you notice, I made very clear, I put draft on all of it, because I really do feel it's important that I get some feedback from you folks, from the AdCom, so that the Town Manager and I can make a final recommendation to the full Board.
Thank you. Jim? Just wanted a couple of notes for the Board. We did this with all the other departments, actually, two years ago. And we, whatever reason, we didn't do it with Fire Department. All the other departments have already gone through this. Fire Department hasn't made a change in fees in five years, so it's really basically long overdue. As you notice, as you look at it, what we tried to achieve, for the most part, was to get it about average of where everybody else is. Some of them are a little above, some aren't, some are below. Some are set by statutory limits, we can't change them. That's not really where the big story is, though. The big story is the master box fees. Now, at the present time, we have somewhere around a couple hundred businesses tied directly into the master box. Now, if you weren't tied into the master box, you would have to buy that same service from Merchant Salon, ADP, somebody like that. You couldn't buy the service that we offer, because you have to go to the intermediary, who then, after they get your call and verify it, then calls Public Safety. So this is actually the penultimate service. This is not available in the private market. In the private market, we're suggesting a $200 annual fee. In the private market, you pay much more than that for an inferior service, i.e. ADP, whatever, because they've still gotta call us. With this service, it's direct to the Fire Department, pretty good service. Now, as you can see from the survey, basically, everybody's charging a fee. Seven years ago, when we went from a, what I'm told was a coaxial cable system to a microwave system, we told the businesses that we would not charge a fee. It's now been seven years. So whatever it is that the business had to do to accommodate that has been long ago amortized. To the extent that we do not charge a fee, because this is an expensive system to operate, we are putting this on the backs of the homeowner, who is getting no value, but is paying for it. And the business owner, who's getting all the value, i.e. doesn't have to go buy a private service, and gets better service than they could anyways, they're getting it essentially for free. So if it's the Board intent, if it's the Board's intent to have this be a taxpayer-funded service, which we offer, you know, to a small number of businesses at no cost, that's fine. That's a, that's a decision you, you're certainly within your rights to make.
That's an interesting way to put it, Kevin.
I'm sorry?
That's an interesting way to put it. Just, I just had to say that, that's all. It's just an interesting way that you put it, like, that's, that's, you know, if we don't go for this, that's what we wanna do, is put it on the taxpayer.
No, no, it's already on the taxpayer. It's on the taxpayers right now. All I'm saying is that if the Board wants to make a decision to leave it paid by the taxpayers, so that a couple hundred businesses can get a very, very nice service, there's nothing wrong with that. That's your decision. But I see this as an equity question, which is, I don't think that's fair, frankly.
But weren't those businesses required to go to that service, to that?
There was a mutual agreement to make the change, yes.
But the businesses were required to do that?
I can't really answer that question. It was before my time.
The businesses were required to do that. So it's not, it's not like, it was requirement that costs the businesses money. It was a requirement by the town that costs additional money for the businesses in town.
No, it wasn't a requirement, but this is what I'm told. It was a mutual agreement between the businesses and the town to make the change, because the coaxial cable, you know, mounted on the poles is very unreliable, whereas microwave is very reliable. So there was a mutually beneficial decision made to make the change. And yes, it cost the town quite a bit of money to do that microwave panel, and it cost the businesses something, I don't know what, to make the retrofit on their end. That's now seven years old. So the question...
Well, I can give you some, I don't think it's, my history, I don't think it's seven years old. I mean, I can find out how much it...
Yeah, it's, what I can tell you is that I've been here, started my fifth year, and it was already in play. I'm thinking that it's pretty close to that. But again, my whole point with this whole thing was, it's very difficult for everybody just to swallow it without really looking at it. And I think it's very important that we analyze it, that we are very, one of the very few communities that don't have that as part of our fee structure. But I think we have to do some research. I think we have to get, this is a community decision. Yes, I am the Fire Chief, and I can set this with discussion with you folks. But I think it would be clearly non-responsible by me, and if I don't, at least sit down with a very small committee with the Town Manager, look at all the information I have, make a determination where we need to go as a community, and then present it to you folks for the final vote. But it, I don't think, sitting here right now and debating, there's a lot of data here, right now, is a healthy thing. I think it would be best to fast-track it, so that it's not letting it delay another year. But sit down with a small group, made up of you folks, the AdCom, the Town Manager, myself, and make a determination, and then come forward with a final recommendation to the full Board.
Well, let me take a little different perspective, just a little bit. As I told the Chief, last year, as part of the labor contract that we signed with the Firefighters Union, we put in an agreement for eight hours of annual training, which cost the town about $15,000. As I reported to you at the time, the expectation when we agreed to that was that we would find a revenue to offset that cost. This is the revenue. This is exactly what we had in mind. So this is not exactly value-neutral, because if I'm in the middle, I've got two weeks to present a balanced budget to the AdCom, and my goal is not to present a balanced budget, it's already balanced. My goal is to create, again, the $400,000 buffer roughly that we had last year. Now, this is 10% of that buffer. If it's the will of the Board not to do this, that's fine, but I just need to have some sort of timely indication, because if not this, then I've gotta find that 40 somewhere else in the budget, because I've still got that cost in there that I've gotta offset. So I just, I just wanna differ with Raj. I'm not saying you gotta decide tonight, but I don't think this is something where we need to take a year, because basically, if the Board takes more than a couple of weeks, you've made a decision, and which is known for this fiscal year, which means I have to find that money elsewhere in the budget. So I want the Board to understand that implication, so if I cut something, you don't say to me, hey, why didn't you tell us that you were gonna do that? So I want you to have that.
Can I, can I look at kinda the big picture, and I did go through these numbers, but in general terms? It looks like you're saying, look, we haven't done a fee adjustment for five years. This is, I've attached the data, and found that there are many areas where we can increase our fees. So what you did, I mean, there's two issues. One issue that we're focusing in was on the master box. And the other one is, you took about 30 towns, you took the average of all their fees, and then you say, where are we in front of, where are we with respect to the average? And you've got some kind of anomalies. You've got, like, Quincy in there, which we don't compare to, but then you've got other ones that were... So if you look at the, not the, not the master box, but if you look at all, there are many of our fees that are already higher than the average.
Right.
Okay? There's nothing that you've done that has brought it down to the average, okay? Everything that is shown on here has increased sometimes two, three, and even four times higher than the average.
Right.
Okay?
And I know exactly which areas you're talking about.
And it's, I mean, it's almost the majority of them, but when you set fee, any town sets fees, they cover the cost of what it costs you to do this. It's not to make money, it's to cover the cost.
Exactly.
So when you just take the average, and you say, okay, here's the average, we're above average on all of this, and we didn't even come down to even try to, and some of these are four times, you're going up by a factor of four on these. It's, what are we doing? Are we just trying to, why even bother looking at the average if you're just gonna do that anyways? Because nothing went down, and there's no rhyme and reason to even trying to come close to the average.
Right. On the ones that we already had set, I didn't feel it was important or that we should tie to touch those. The ones that you're talking about, that are like, that are the high-number ones, are usually dealing with inspections of multiple units. And one of the things that I looked at when, and I'll give you, let me just find one real quick.
Well, I'm gonna give you an example. Here, there's a number of permits, two, okay? Small company inspections, six or more units. You went from $50.
Right.
The average was 179, and you went to $200. So that's a factor of four, and you only did two of them.
And the reason why I did that is, if you looked at the ones that had actually, some of them, like I said, hadn't updated their fees in a while, were all flat-lined, just like we were. The ones that have updated theirs had started looking at, like, for example, we did $50 for a single unit for an inspection. And the ones that, the communities that started looking at multiple units, instead of just keeping them all at 50, they actually started multiplying each unit by 50. And that's why some of them come up with these huge numbers when you looked at them, because they're talking about multiple units. Five or six units gave a large, a lot larger number, because it wasn't flat-lined like what we used to do for $50. So I absolutely know what you're talking about, and that was why, when I sit down with the small committee, I can justify all this and do that. But I clearly respect what the Town Manager's saying, because he's got his budget here. That's why I was trying to come up with some type of plan for a fast-track to digest this information, give you guys the ability to look at it and give me some feedback. Because I didn't, I also didn't just look at Quincy, I looked at a lot of the other communities that have started to change the way that they were thinking and how they were doing their fee structures based of what the other communities were doing. The only thing I wish I would've done, and I didn't, is some of these fees that you see haven't been changed like us for five or six years. And of course, the ones that you see that are much higher are ones that have just finalized theirs in the last probably year, year and a half. And so the other ones I see that all really stem out there was all dealing with installation of underground or removal of underground tanks, anything that dealt with removing of tanks that had substances like oil that is considered a hazardous material. All of their fees were different than ours. And that's why, you know, we went through a lot of them. You see a lot of them that we put that we are NA is because we feel that the Deputy Chief does it as part of his normal duties. And so we didn't just start going through this hastily. I just looked at the ones that seemed to be kind of obvious to me, that I felt that we would wanna discuss. There's a lot of them I didn't even want to bring up, because I just feel it's, it's not worthy for us to even stem and look at it, because I looked at how many that we do in a year, and it just didn't make any sense.
So for instance, and I, that's fine. Brush and burning, we've never had a fee on that, and you're $2,500, so $5.
Right.
Does it cost the agency or the Fire Department $2,500 to issue this?
You'd be amazed how many calls that we go out on burning permits to break up or neutralize disputes between neighbors. I mean, a lot. And so we don't charge anything, so we're doing a lot of service there. And I, you know, I think everybody loves to keep their yards clean and burn brush, but it does add a lot of nuisance-type emergency calls that we have to go on. But again, we do it because...
It's very similar, Jim, when we have the hurricanes or power outages, the alarms for these buildings flash off, and you're dispersing multiple crews everywhere. And just because you'll have 15, 20 alarms go off, police and fire at the same time because of power failures. And, you know, so there's a fee, there's a cost to that. It's basically, they're all false alarms. One out of 1,000 isn't, it's that bad, you know?
And again, we, false alarms was another one that some communities really hammer the, hammer the folks that have false alarms. We thought we were being reasonable. We thought we were being reasonable. Um, I, I just think that the, the one thing that, that Kevin had brought up is that I am also in agreement with his thought process that the businesses have gotten, um, no charges, no fees for seven years. And I think that that, that time window, whatever their investment was, is, is been, been done. Again, that's my, my thought. I'd like to have more discussion on it. But I, I definitely feel that, that, that kind of money, uh, would cover the training aspect. And, and the training that we're talking about is the training that's necessary to protect these properties. And, you know, one thing is, is that, and we just talked about it a minute ago, uh, not too long ago, about public safety and, and training. It's very critical for us to be able to train our first responders, our firefighters and paramedics, to be able to handle and manage every aspect of our community. And, and that's businesses and residential and all of that. And, um, that's one area of our, our, our operating budget that, that needs some, some assistance. And so-
I think, and I get it and I appreciate that, but I'm, I'm looking at this, and when I went through it, the vast majority is well above the average. And that's what scares me.
Right. And again, I think, I think if you look at the, uh, the number of permits that we're talking about, they're not that large, but we're not a type of community, um, while we've been seeing it a lot more, where we're getting into multiple units. And, um, and you talked a minute ago, Jim, about, you know, are we recouping our costs or are we actually, um, making money? Deputy Bagley, uh, he's probably spending eighty percent of his job managing this. This is a huge aspect of his position. And, uh, you'll hear his voice on the radio sometimes at, you know, six-thirty, seven o'clock in the morning, starting to do these inspections, do these tests. And he's there, you know, late in the afternoon. So I, I don't want anybody in the public to think that we're out there trying to make money.
I, I understand that, but I think my point is, there's a deputy fire chief in every one of these other towns doing the exact same thing.
Yes.
And they're charging a lot less than what we are, or what we're proposing. These, these are huge increases.
And there's also a lot of communities that are charging for every aspect that, that the deputy does right now in regards to plans review that we don't. So-
And those are reflected in this as well. And I took that, and, and the big-ticket item is the, um, and I don't want to keep dwelling on this, but the, um, if you're looking at the twenty-six thousand-
Yep.
For master box, out of the thirty communities we looked at, only eleven of them even charged for it. And out of those eleven, we're higher than all but three.
Yeah. The reason why we came up with that is that that, again, the communities that have just started to look at that, Mansfield being for one, they just went to two-hundred. Norfolk, uh, just went to one-eighty-five, if I'm not mistaken. So, a lot of the communities have broken it down in a different manner. Some of them were connecting to the max, to master box. There's like three different categories that they were using. And again, if you add them all up, they're above two-hundred. I just focused on one.
Okay.
But, uh, I would encourage if there's a member of the board that'd like to sit down with us, again, we, I do believe and I agree with, with the town manager, we would have to fast-track some, some dialogue so that he can present it in an appropriate manner for his budget. But I definitely feel we need to at least address some of these. To not address any of these, uh, I feel is, is not right. It's, it's been well over five years, and I feel we need to look at this.
Okay. Anyone else? Need to monopolize the discussion?
My thought is that, you know, Kevin should probably look other places for that forty thousand dollars for. I mean, because I just think that personally, I think it does need to go, be gone through with other members, maybe a small committee with, with the chief or whatever. Because I just feel like, here we go again. We're just gonna, um, you know, push some of these commercial folks, you know, that, it's making a, just adding to the cost of wanting to do bu, business in Foxborough. And it just, it, you know, it screams it. And I just, you know, had I known, you know, whatever Kevin, uh, we were talking about previously, that we'll try to find, we will find that money someplace else, maybe if I had known before that you were going to increase, just increase fees on somebody, um, on, on folks, that I might not have, uh, voted to go ahead with whatever you said you'd, you know, fund it with. So I, you know, some of these things, when I, I get surprised by, you know, I just, I don't appreciate it. I don't appreciate it at ten-thirty at night, seriously, but, that's just my thought. I just, I just, you know, I think it needs time to go through. I mean, I went through the numbers and, and that was my first reaction was, just like you, Jim, is, wow, you know, we're going up on this and someday, I guess I would like to know where all my tax dollars actually go down. That's what I'd like to know, where exactly our money is going towards, you know?
Yeah, I suggest we take it under advisement, James. And then we'll come back at the next meeting to have a five-minute discussion on it and see if somebody's interested in, in being part of the committee.
All right.
Okay.
I'll thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thanks. And the board of selectmen fees?
The good news is, we only raised three, um, out of all of them. The commercial parking, we, I had had an agreement with a Businessman's Association of Route One that we would do a dollar fee increase back in two thousand and ten. We did that. And then after that, we'd do some sort of inflation offset every year. We didn't do some, anything last year. This, I don't have the exact percent, but I'm looking at it. And three, six, fifteen cent increase on a three-fifty base and twenty-five cent increase on a seven-dollar base looks like about two and a half percent. So, rough and tough, that's where we got that number.
In, in one year?
Yes. Um, the restaurant, seven-day all alcohol, we went up five hundred dollars for the very simple reason, we are having tremendous, um, issues with our pouring establishments. And, um, they are quite frankly costing the taxpayers a fortune. Um, you've, we've had seven compliance hearings in the last few months. That's just a small part of what those establishments are costing us. So frankly, I felt the five hundred dollar increase was very modest, given what's going on.
I make a motion, we go to a dry town.
That'd probably save us a fortune.
To give up breathalyzer.
Wouldn't save my, it wouldn't save me anything, that's for sure.
We've just got five good breathalyzer tests, and she's- I, I understand. I mean, that, the, the cost associated with that, but I, I gotta say, we're very specific. Every time there's an issue, all our fees are paid for, for the attorney, unless there's other fees, uh, on top of that. Everyone that has come in with a violation has paid all of our attorney fees, right?
No, they've only paid, yeah, they've paid the fee for the attorney to represent the town. And they pay the overtime for the officer who's here. But they did not pay any of the money associated with all the compliance checks, all the bar checks, all the violations, um, all the protective custodies, all the disorderly conducts, and dozens and dozens and dozens of charges, and thousands of hours of time and overtime happening to the Foxborough P.D. because of liquor in bars. And I'm not, this isn't the stadium. Okay? This is the bars. We're trying to put some numbers together on it. We've started the study. Um, I'll have something for you in February and in March. And what we know is it's in the hundreds of thousands. Hear what I said, hundreds of thousands, what it's costing us. So I thought a five hundred dollar fee increase for the thirty, twenty-something bars we have, you know, pouring establishments, I should say, because it's, they're not all large service bars. Some of them are very small. Unfortunately, the law doesn't give you any way to say a small establishment will pay a smaller fee than a large establishment. If there was, I'd do it, trust me. But, you know, you got Toby Keith paying the same as tastings, and they're gigantically different places. But the law doesn't let me do anything else, so.
So if this, if this is not Patriots Place issue, if this is everywhere else, any idea what the other towns are charging for all alcohol?
No, we didn't do any survey. We, this is done strictly on the basis of, you know, I mean, I could have suggested to go to the max on all these fees. I don't happen to know off the top of my head what it is. But I do know that the taxpayers of Foxborough are paying a lot of money to keep, um, for liquor-related problems. And the thought just struck me that it's, um, you know, time to capture some money on be, on behalf of the taxpayers. Five hundred dollars apiece is not going to bring in a lot of money for the town. You know, um, maybe, I don't know, ten, fifteen thousand, something like that, yeah. So we're not talking a gigantic sum of money here, but it is certainly something to help offset what's becoming a significant issue. And as I say, we're putting together some very specific numbers to put in front of you, um, at some point. I don't have them yet, and it's a large project, and it's going to take a month or more to finish. But I just had a meeting on Friday, and we're getting there. But, so, it's up to you folks. I mean, I, I put the issue in front of you, and you decide what you want to do, so, you know. I think Ed and I feel pretty strongly that what's going on right now is costing the taxpayers a lot of money, and we should make the bars, uh, pay some of that back.
Maybe we should also take that under advisement, Mr. Chamberlain, because we'll wait back for some feedback from the locals. They're sure are watching it this hour. And, um, I'm really driving some salamander right now. Sorry about that.
Kevin, the, uh, these fees that you're proposing, this goes into the general fund?
They do.
Okay, so how would Chief O'Leary benefit from the?
Well, everything that goes in the general fund gets used by all town boards, committees, commissions, and departments.
Okay.
So, um, one of the proposals I have in the budget for you this year is to add a new police officer. Now, there isn't a, a direct correlation here, because this money doesn't pay but a fraction of that office's costs and fringe benefits. So that's not the idea. The idea is to try to recapture from the cost center that's generating it a little more of the revenue to off, instead of, you know, the, the average homeowner in Foxborough doesn't get any benefit necessarily from the fact that Restaurant A, um, serves liquor and has forty-five protective custodies a year. But, that business gets enormous benefit from it, i.e., tremendous income. So, the thought process is very simple. It's an equity question, same as with the fire alarm. Why should the taxpayers bear the burden of that? Now, there is no law that lets us recoup a hundred percent of that cost. There's no, so, we're saying, what is it, thirty, five hundred? I mean, frankly-
Five hundred dollars?
Three thousand, I'm sorry. Frankly, three thousand dollars per drinking establishment, times all of them, is a sum vastly less than what it costs us to provide police protection to those same twenty-plus, um, pouring establishments.
Well, I could, I personally, I got six things I could bring up right now, myself, pro and con. And like I said, it's just not the time for it. Um, the board needs to take it under advisement, and then we'll, we'll bring it up again.
We have a comparison of Foxborough's, um, the restaurant fee, um, to the surrounding towns? We've done it before, or with other things?
Yes, I will say that's a lot of work.
Dedham's the only one that's comparable right now.
So, here's what I would ask you.
Yeah, it's way lower. Some don't have any. I mean, Fox, what's Norfolk, two? Maybe one?
Oh, I'm, I'm talking like Mansfield's, Norton's, you know, you don't have to go throughout Massachusetts, but just like the-
You're talking like ten or fifteen towns? Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a simple question, but I know it's just one more thing that you've got to do, and it's time-consuming.
It's a simple question, but it's always a hard thing to get a simple answer from another town, so.
But, but you know, when, when, when you, when we get questioned by one of the establishments that says, "Why are you doing this?" We want to be able to say, "Well, this is the same what Mansfield's charging." Or, you know what I mean? You have to, give us some informa, give us some information that we can use when we're questioned.
I think, but basically what Chief Hadfield did is, did that. He went to the different towns and got that, so you're looking for the same thing for this.
Yeah, because we seem to always get comparisons to other towns for other things, so just- And I'm not saying go to eastern Massachusetts, just like, you know, a few of the surrounding towns.
We've got a standard set of fifteen towns we compare to. I'm just asking you, if you don't think you're going to approve this, sort of, bingo. And it's sort of kind of sounded like you're not going to approve it.
No, no, actually, it, it's not that at all, Kevin. I mean, I think a beer and wine establishment has a bigger difference than a full alcohol license. That'd be one thing I would bring up.
Yeah, the experience we've had though, Mark, doesn't, you know, what Ed says to me is that it's the all-alcohol places that are causing the problem.
That's what I'm saying. So why would you put a five hundred dollar increase on beer and wine?
It's not, it's not.
The increase is only on all alcohol pouring. It's not on package stores. It's not on the little restaurants that have, tend to have beer and wine. It's not on the packies, we're not having problems with them. We're having problems in the all-alcohol pouring. That's where we're having a problem. That's why we did the compliance checks.
And it, it is going to be-
Find out the fees.
I could keep going and going, because I got five.
Yes, we can do the survey. I just really would, would respectfully ask the board. It, it is a fair amount of work. I know it sounds like it isn't, but it's probably going to be three to four hours of somebody's time. I don't know who.
Legacy Place. Ask them what it is in Legacy Place. There's no other town that compares to us when it comes to the amount of liquor establishments and, and the fifteen you're thinking of.
Well, I want to be sure that that, I mean, that, that's a fifteen-minute call, probably, to get that one. But I want to be sure that gets to Ginny's issue and, and the board's issue. If this is something you want, well, I'm very happy to do it. I just, you know, honestly, if, if the board's not inclined to do this, that's fine.
No, no, I'd like, because it's, when someone comes up to me, I want to be able to say, "This is, this is why."
I think honestly, also, uh, you know, for the last two years, you know, we've gone through all the salaries of Town Hall and, and adjusted it compared to all the surrounding towns. We went through all the building inspector fees, adjusted it up for the surrounding towns. We're doing it with the fire. We're doing it with this. At some point, is there any efficiency to all the training we're doing, all the putting things together, that something can stay the same and not go up? And it's getting to the point where I'm very frustrated that the easy answer is, because we've got to balance the budget, we're going to go through this shopping list and do the math and come up with something. That's, that's what I'm feeling right now.
That's a no from Jim.
That's why I can't, I can't, I don't want to talk about it anymore.
I would like for someone to say, "Jeez, well, we got this training, and we can actually bring this price down," but I have not seen it, other than no change is the best we can do.
You're absolutely right, Jim. This is a discussion that we could have, so.
And, and I don't want to take it out on these two items, but I think this is the straw that just, it's, uh-
Deb, I don't have any argument with that philosophy. But, all I'm asking for, you, you know, I bring lots of ideas to you. This was an idea that's come up because of a, of a problem we're having, and this is one way to address it. If this is not the way the board wants to address it, all I need is for you to tell me, "Kev, that's not the way." And I'll look at the, you know, many, many, many other alternatives I'm looking at. But unlike the other ones, I can execute or not those. This one requires you to decide. So I need the board to decide. You don't have to do it tonight. But it's something that I need the board to give me an indication on in the next couple of weeks, because it's part of that budget over there. Okay?
I think on, on this particular one, if your answer is, it costs, we're, we're increasing it five hundred dollars times X amount establishments, we're doing that because it's cost us this much because of X, Y, Z over the last five years.
That's exactly why we're doing it.
Then we can say, "At least we're covering the costs."
Well, you're not, you're not covering the cost, you're not even close to it. But by increasing it five hundred dollars, we're just covering that a little bit more of the cost. That's all we're doing. We're not- The cost for police service at the pouring establishments in Foxborough is gigantic. So, there's no way this fee can amortize that full cost. But, what we're trying to do is get a little bit more of it paid for by the people that are benefiting, profiting from the problem. It seemed like a fair, you know, question to put before you. And if the answer's no, then the answer's no, I understand. But it's a, if, you know, I thought it was a good question to put in front of you and see what the response is. Because it's one of those many ideas that we've got for ways to help balance this budget. So, that's all it is.
I'd like to just get, you know, the information from a couple of more communities out there, see where they are. But I think the other thing is, is it possible to get an intern to help Chief O'Leary work on identifying those?
I've got two interns working now, and they're both up to their eyeballs already. Um, that's, that report that I just mentioned on, um, I want to do this very carefully. The report we're working on, on liquor establishments and how much they're costing the taxpayers in calls is a gigantic effort, because you have to go through thousands of data sets to extract that. Because we don't keep the records away. We could get it easily.
You have an intern helping him with that?
And then in addition, and I've got an intern, and that's all he's doing. Then, and I got a second one coming on board next week, I hope, who's going to jump in on that and help. And then we have a second effort, which is to look at all the injury on duty that we have. Because remember, a lot of our offices are getting into, you know, scuffles. And we've had some very serious injuries with offices out for a long time. And we fill sixty or seventy percent of their shift with overtime. When you take all that, and that's another intern effort that's going on right now. When you take all that, and that's another intern effort that's going on right now, when you take all that and you put it together, it's a very, very big number. But the interns are already working on that, so, yeah, first place I went here is, you know, try to pull an intern off something for, you know, a few hours and put them on this, and we'll get you this information.
Okay. That's it for the, we're about an hour and a half behind on the regular agenda. Anything else before we vote to go into executive session for labor negotiations? We did all our action items, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Chief, thank you. Appreciate it. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
That we go into executive session with the purpose of labor negotiations and to adjourn for this whole...
Adjourn without going back into public session?
Yes.
Motion made by Linda, seconded?
Second.
All right, further discussion, Linda?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
Mark and myself says yes. Thank you all. Frank, thank you so much for staying late. Appreciate it.